All right, I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, July 13th. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Carmichael?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Pill?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Bartel?
Here.
And Chairman Richard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
If you would please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will I have you all standing, please, if you will? You've got to be sworn in if you want to give any testimony, so raise your right hand. Over, come on. There you go. I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. Okay, secondly, I would ask that you silence any and all electronic devices. Now, we have sign-in sheets in the hall, and if you did not sign in before you came in, as you get to the podium, there is also a sign-in sheet for you. Okay, give me a second, folks. Okay, under old business, we are going to move Westmont Imports to the end of the agenda so we can take care of most of you folks. I think you want to be leaving, you don't want to sit here all evening. So may I have a motion, please?
I will move that we move Westmont import to the last on the agenda.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Okay, under new business, planning and zoning item 16014, Jean Scoobal regarding the property located at 340 South Lincoln for the following. A, a zoning code variance request to permit the construction of a five-foot solid fence in the side yard adjoining the street in ER3 single-family residential district. Good evening.
Bear with me because I'm not used to...I already signed in out there.
Thank you.
I am going for a variance, and I had just purchased the home in March, and my intention from the very beginning was to put up a fence. I have seven grandchildren, all under the age of seven, and three that are two, and they're...I can't even take them in the backyard right now because it's such a danger being on 55th and Lincoln. So I purchased the home knowing that this is what I wanted to do, and actually I was quite set back that I wasn't able to do it because I'm not used to variances or zoning laws. So my main concern is safety totally. And I know my neighbor has a fence that's right next door that's five foot, and I would like to do the same thing, but I know because of vision, you can't do it on a corner. But it's in my backyard, it's not even near the corner, it's set in from my deck, which you can't even see where the fence is going to be from the corner. I also think it's my least concern, but I do think it'll add value to the home. It's a very nice fence, very nice wooden fence. I know I could put up a cyclone and have no problem, but again, I really think the two-year-olds could climb it, and it's still not safe. And that's about it. That was my intention.
All right, do you have...you know the picture that you provided us in our packet?
Yes.
Would you put that on the teleprompter so the folks at home could see?
Sure.
And even the people in the audience could see. And then if you would draw the outline as to where you want the fence to be?
Which one? This...which one did you want me to put?
I think that one would explain it best.
Okay, where's the teleprompter? Okay, right there. Where I want to put it is the deck, it's coming down the staircase, right along the staircase, right along the cement sidewalk, and then it goes across the sidewalk, that's where my gate will be, and then you can't see the garage, but the garage is in this back corner, so it would go from the corner of the cement to the back corner of my garage. And it's not even along the sidewalk because I don't want the kids playing under the evergreens. That's, you know, it doesn't grow grass or anything. So it's even six foot in from the sidewalk. So I'm hoping that I get granted the variance.
Okay, I would like to note that this board has recommended approval of fences right along the village-owned sidewalks, so we are even gaining some interior space from the public sidewalk in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, staff, if you would, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What you have before you is PZ 16014, a variance to construct a five-foot solid fence within the setback. As you had just indicated, I started working with the applicant many months ago, I think, is when we started, when she first applied for a fence to be installed. I did go over with her the options of you could request it right up to the sidewalk, you could request it at six feet tall. It was never the intent that it be a complete privacy, it was always a security issue. And like she has stated, she doesn't want it in front of the trees because she doesn't want the kids playing under the trees, and then the vegetation on the outside does create a buffer to the fence, so you won't completely see it. In terms of code, if you remember, it was probably four years ago that we amended the code for fences on corners that said that they could be behind the corner of the house if the house was closer than the setback. In this case, I think this effect's 30 feet on 55th. But it had to still be behind the house. In this case, the house, I think, is 19 feet is the corner of the house, but if you've noticed, she has a side exit to her house, not a backyard exit. So she's already got an existing deck with kind of a surround around the deck for some privacy. If she was putting the fence behind the house, then she'd be coming out of her house, going down her deck, not be in a secure area, and then have to enter through a gate into her backyard. So what this remedy is trying to do is provide her safe access to the rear garden. And of course, I'm available for any questions of this.
I think we've got the best of both worlds, Jill. Okay, is there anybody from the public who wishes to comment on this issue? Okay, seeing no hands, we'll start with the commissioners. Commissioner Bartel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only question I had as I was driving there looking at it was, would there be obstructed view as you come up to 55th Street? And it didn't look like there was. So my sense is that it's safe, and especially the safety issue you have with your children is a big concern. So I'm very supportive.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I am also very supportive, probably the most empathetic that there could be since I also live on 55th and installed a fence last year for the same exact reason. So I think this fence is perfect.
Thank you.
It's going to look nice, and you've already improved your property a lot since you've bought it.
Working on it.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
The joys of a corner lot. You feel like you're a second-class citizen. He can do it, I can't. I liked where you're putting the fence, on the other side of the trees. I wouldn't mind, like we've talked before, if you would put it right by the sidewalk. I understand it, that gives you more yard, but is it workable yard?
No.
In your opinion, apparently not. It's your opinion that counts here. One of our jobs is to try to make it as easy as possible for people in Westmont to move into their houses, stay in their houses, improve their houses, and stay in their houses.
That's my plan.
Everything. And we try our best. Every thing is a...every instance is one unto itself, and so I support your idea and hope your grandkids enjoy their new backyard.
That's also my plan, thank you.
Commissioner Pill?
Thank you, yes, I think this is a perfect use of a fence. This is what we're here for. I might ask you, is this...this is the fence?
It's changed just a little bit, and I do have a...I didn't photocopy it, it's called a layered traditional, which it's almost like that.
Can you get it centered on the screen and then we can see it right here at our seats? They'll zoom in on which...which one is it? Oop. There we go.
It is that one.
Oh, the top middle?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's very attractive.
That is the fence.
Yep, I wish you the best of luck with it.
Thank you.
It certainly has my support.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I also support it.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yeah, you have a very nice house, and I support your request. I have a question. If I want to put up electrified barbed wire to keep the kids in, is there any regulation with the village that would keep me from doing that?
We have prohibitions on barbed wire and electric.
How about electrified?
Electric as well.
And one thing I do want, when I found out about this, I got quite mad at two people. And I do, I think, is it Jill, I think? I think I might have...I'm sorry. I had already apologized to Jill, so.
Well, then, in that case, taking back my hope. I applaud you on the fence. I like the idea you don't have any horizontal supports for the kids to climb on and get over.
Yeah. No, no, they're quite ambitious little children. But that's also why I wanted the...I don't know if that needs a variance, is the little fence along the...what is it, the stairs that go down to the basement?
The picket fence.
Yes. Well, it's not a picket fence, it's going to be kind of like a aluminum.
Iron.
Yeah, aluminum, to keep them from falling into the...another thing they like to climb on.
That proposal's not a part of the variance because it doesn't require a variance.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to cover all bases.
Okay, may we have a reading of the findings of fact for a variance, please?
This is PZ 16014, Jean Scoobal regarding 340 South Lincoln Street, Westmont. Request for a variance to allow five-foot solid fence in the side yard adjoining a street. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return, it permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. Findings of fact, the property is unique in that it is located along a busy street, 55th Street, and has a side door entrance and patio rather than a rear door entrance and patio. The purpose...the proposed fence will provide security to this entrance and patio, and the height of the fence is less than code allows. If the applicant were to strictly comply with the zoning ordinance, the applicant or children and grandchildren would have to exit the side door near busy 55th Street and walk in...walk to the fenced area in the rear, thereby losing the security and safety needed in their side yard adjoining a street. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Findings of fact, the property is unique in that it has a side door entrance and a patio which the applicant is trying to enclose for safety and privacy purposes. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Findings of fact, numerous other properties in the area have fence encroachments in the side yard adjoining a street similar to what the applicant is proposing. The fence height is less than allowed by the ordinance, and the fence location will preserve existing trees. As such, this fence at this location will not alter the character of the area.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement, therefore the findings of fact for variance are hereby approved. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item 16014, a zoning code variance request to permit the construction of a five-foot solid fence in the side yard adjoining the street in ER3 single-family residential district.
So moved?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Bartel, seconded by Commissioner Carmichael. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, Ms. Scoobal, you have our recommendation for approval, but it is only a recommendation. Board of Trustees will be the final authority on this.
Yes, I think it's next Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, that wasn't so bad, was it? Planning and zoning item 16015, McLean Family Trust regarding the property located at 138 North Cass Avenue for the following. A, a special use permit request to operate a business office on the ground floor in the B1 limited business district. Yes, sir, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Tim McLean, I'm one of the owners of the 138 North Cass. I did sign in when I came.
Thank you.
My purpose is I'm asking permission to utilize our space for the operation of my business, which is a property management company. And I know that the space is currently zoned for retail. We've just been unsuccessful in, based on the way the building is kind of configured, being able to get someone that wanted to utilize our space for retail. Recently, I've had the opportunity to pursue some business venture out here, and so I'd like to, with your permission, utilize it for my business, which is property management. I...any questions, or I don't know?
Okay, may we have staff comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is PZ 16015, McLean Family Trust at the 138 North Cass Avenue. What it is, is he's asking a special use permit to operate a business office on the ground floor in the B1 limited business district. It is...does not allow by right the office use on the first floor in the B1 district. It does require it to be approved as a special use. However, it does not have any special conditions like some of the special uses have, so there's no special conditions that need to be met. So just as the applicant had stated, it's a question of the space, is it adequate, does it fit within the village, does it fit within the downtown, does it fit within the TIP district? And as always, we have available for questions.
Okay, very good. We'll open public comment. Does anybody from the audience wishes to speak about this issue? Seeing nobody, raise your hands. Vote to public comment, and then we'll start with Commissioner Carmichael.
I have one question, sir. Can you give us an idea of what kind of traffic you would expect in and out of there? Would be tenants, contractors?
In the beginning, it's not going to be very much because we're kind of starting from the ground floor. We're trying to build our business. I can tell you from practical experience with my other company, it's kind of cyclical, more during the beginning of the month, we have people that come pay their HOA dues and things of that nature. Vendors will come periodically throughout. It's, I would say, maybe 15, 20 people in the beginning. It could get more than that as time goes on, but in the beginning, it won't be that much. At the present time, just going to be myself and maybe one support person, so there's not going to be a lot of employees there either. But we hope, you know, we want to grow, we hope we, you know, we build a business, and if we outgrow that space, then obviously we're looking to move. My dad is the principal in our trust, and so if someone were to come along and purchase it, he'd be happy to sell it to him. I'm just trying to use it. It works for me right now, and I'd like to be able to use it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I have no problem.
Commissioner Pill?
I have no problem, support it.
Commissioner Thomas?
If there was someone who was zoned for...
You'd have them there.
Correct.
You know.
So I support you being able to use your own business if it's your own building for yours, if you can't do what we would prefer it to be, you know. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
My only question is, is it, you said that other retailers that have come to check it out, it doesn't meet their requirements. Is this mostly about space size of the area?
It's more about the configuration of it. It just...it's kind of difficult to explain, but if you go and look at it, most people for storefront, they're wanting it to be set up where you walk in and there's their storefront. The way this is, is there's a little bit of storefront, everything else is behind. I think if I remember correctly, years ago, there used to be a photo shop that was there, so there was a darkroom and some other areas. I don't anticipate...I don't want to reconfigure anything, I just want to utilize it, but yes, we've had several people that have looked at it, and it just didn't meet their criteria without wanting to completely reconfigure the building.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I am in support as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartel?
I'm supportive. It's been vacant a long time, and although it doesn't contribute to the retail tax base, it certainly doesn't empty either, so I have no problem with it at all. Very supportive.
Thank you.
Have you even considered completely gutting the interior of both spaces and marketing as a...
We have. The challenge with that was is the cost that was going to be incurred, upfront cost to do that. We were going to be required to put in fire sprinklers and various other items to get it in, and so we just didn't...we didn't want to go that route. We tried to want to rent it the way it was. We were successful in renting 140 North Cass for a while, that space was better. They left due to lack of business, so we are still trying to market that space. But 138 has always been a difficult situation for us, and so it will work for me for the beginning, and then later on, of course, the building could be for sale or what have you, but it just...it wasn't making sense for us every time we tried to go out and reconfigure it or completely redesign the building inside.
Okay, question for staff. George, Jill? Would sprinklers be required if this were to...
That was one of the limiting factors, is that it's a mixed-use building, there's residential on the upper floors, so new permits would trigger the sprinkler requirement.
Would the sprinkler also have to be put into the residential units above, or just...
I would assume so. That's something we can check on, but I know the sprinklers would be required for the building.
Is that because it's a whole-time use?
Because it's mixed-use.
Yeah. See, that's why we never did...that's why we didn't do that, because we didn't want to get involved.
So therein lies the crux of your hardship, unless you're going to invest a lot of dollars in a building that's not bringing you any revenue now.
Correct.
Makes sense.
And just a side note, and the family has actively tried to redevelop in that area before too, so.
Unfortunately, they're not successful, doggone it. All right, we need a reading of the findings of fact for a variance, if we could have that, please?
McLean Family Trust regarding 138 North Cass Avenue, request for a special use to allow a ground floor business office in the B1 limited business district. Criteria one, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Findings of fact, the proposed office space is wholly enclosed, and the proposed office space will not emit adverse noise, light, or odors, and instead will be a passive small office use. Criteria number two, the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. Findings of fact, the proposed use in an existing building is a passive office use that is wholly enclosed and with sufficient off-street parking. As such, it will not adversely impact surrounding properties or impair property values. Criteria three, the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Findings of fact, surrounding property is fully developed, and the applicant is proposing to occupy space in an existing building. This occupancy will not impact the ability of surrounding properties to redevelop. Criteria four, adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Findings of fact, the property is already served by adequate utilities, off-street parking, and other necessary facilities. Criteria five, adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Findings of fact, the property contains sufficient off-street parking. There is additional public parking in the immediate area, and the property is served by public sidewalks in the central business district. Criteria six, the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the planning commission. Findings of fact, no zoning variances are being requested, and the proposed use meets all other code and ordinance requirements of the village.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement, therefore the findings of fact for a special use are hereby adopted and approved. Under planning and zoning item 16015, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item A, special use permit request to operate a business office on the ground floor in the B1 limited business district. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation for approval, but it's only a recommendation.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Planning and zoning item 16016, Dominic Tomassoni regarding the property located at 38 and 42 West Naperville Road for the following. A, special use permit request for an existing automotive garage located at 38 West Naperville Road in the B2 general business district with existing non-conforming exterior storage of vehicles, excuse me, awaiting service or customer pickup. Item B, special use permit request for expansion of an automotive garage to be located at 42 West Naperville Road in the B2 general business district. Mr. Tomassoni?
Hi. Hello, everyone. I believe the building in question here, or not believe, is a small engine repair shop, previous small engine repair shop at 42 West Naperville Road. I've owned that building for approximately 13 years. The building at 38 West Naperville Road, which is the larger building, I've owned that building for 25-plus years now. They've both been automotive repair facilities since practically the early 20s, and the smaller one, I believe even the early teens, we have it documented back to. It's pretty small, but it's mine, and I would like to expand my business over into the 42W building, which is the building on the corner right there. It's going to give us ample amount of space and quicker car service in and out. It's not anywhere near as cluttered as that corner used to look with small engines, snowblowers, snow plowing equipment, even big trucks that were parked out there. You're just...you don't see it now, and you're not going to see it again. You see basically mostly luxury cars being ampedled in and out of that building. And again, it's a special use, but my business is growing, and we want to expand, and we just need to expand over just that little bit. I know that you gentlemen all have the paperwork from the last meeting that we had. Does anyone have any questions? Because I don't have that in front of me.
Not a problem. We'll go to staff comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What you have is PZ 16-016 regarding the properties at 38 and 42 West Naperville Road. There's two considerations that you had before there, before you. Number one is that at 38 West Naperville is his operating automobile business. We do not have a record of previously approved special use for that business, so it was operating there before we required special uses for this. The special condition for a special use is that he have a landscape plan to screen cars awaiting service. What he has at that is an existing non-conforming back lot that's fenced in. So the first step of this is we need to consider a special use for his existing business before we can consider an expansion of that business. So that's the second part of the request, is a request for the special use then to expand into 42 West Naperville. There is a fenced-in area back behind that. We don't currently allow outdoor storage, like on his existing non-conforming lot. So you'll notice on his plans, he's noted that as kind of customer pickup, drop-off, kind of moving cars around, not the outdoor storage that the small engine repair was using where they actually had equipment sitting back behind those fences in a constant fashion. So what you have before you is those two considerations, and always available for questions.
Thank you. Will anybody from the public speak on this issue? Please, if you would, sir? Give us your name and sign in, if you would, please.
Sure. My name is John Brury, I have signed in. Just speaking on behalf of Mr. Tomassoni and his enterprise, I'm a customer, a client, and a friend, and have found his workspace to always be clean, well-kept, never concerned with the quality of work, and obviously his business is expanding based on his quality of work, his reputation, and what you see moving in and out of his facility. So I just wanted to...I'm also a close neighbor, I live on North Park Street, so I'm not far, I drive by every day, so I wanted to make sure that someone from the community was able to... So I wanted to make sure that someone from the community was able to voice their support for this variance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Will there be any further public comment? Seeing no hands raised up, we'll close the public comment, and we'll start with Commissioner Bartel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things that I noted in my notes is staff recommends the applicant stripe and clearly mark customer spaces as well as signage or striping to prevent parking on the sidewalk or close to the street. Is that something you're working on? Is that something...
It's currently there.
A recommendation?
It is currently there.
It is there, okay. Because that was something I thought was necessary. And the fence that separates the business from the resident, it seems like the resident is very close, right?
He's actually over my property line.
Is that right?
Yep.
Because that was a, I thought to myself, there's no space between...
No, he's actually over my property line by six and a half inches.
So your fence is on his property?
No, he's over, it's on six and a half inches in from the line.
Or into yours.
But there's a small garage. Do you see the, it's like blue or green?
Yeah.
That's like six inches onto my space, onto my line.
And is that a problem?
It's all right.
All right. Well, those were the concerns that I had.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I'm sorry.
Glad you noticed.
Oh, yes.
Sorry, Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I was just hoping maybe you could narrate a little bit more this, because there's this concern that we've heard that people, not necessarily your staff, but customers come and they queue up to one of the stalls, and they're actually sitting on the sidewalk, or they're sitting in the public right-of-way. And it's because, you know, the existing buildings have so many openings, and they're opening right onto the street, basically. There's nowhere for them to queue. And so when you're expanding into this new lot on the corner, could you just describe where the striping, if it does exist, where it is and in the future?
On the 38 West or 42 West?
I guess just, let's just say I'm Googling your, I'm coming here for the first time, and I want to, I'm Googling it, I'm coming down the street. How am I going to know where to pull in to meet somebody?
Most people pull right into the parking lot that's right behind it.
At 38?
Yeah. There's a wide opening right there. There's no sign at the street, which, we're talking about that now, to post a shorter sign that says parking, you know, with an arrow, which is easily doable, easily doable. That parking lot's very big.
And then once they park, they would come to the front door, find somebody, and then one of your staff would actually take the car back onto Naperville Road. And if it's the light duty and it's going to the corner line, they would turn right back into that lot from Naperville Road.
They're going to turn directly into 42W, you mean? Is that what you mean?
Oh, I didn't know there was a cross-access.
It's, it's...
Except for that public right-of-way in front of 38.
In front of 38? Yeah, you can't cut through that. You can't cut through that way. There's drive-up lots right there. Can you see the separation? Can you turn this light on here? It's on?
Yeah, it's on.
So...
You don't have this one, do you?
No, I don't think...
No, that's a good one, no.
Staff provided that one. Do you want me to put that up on the...
Sure.
I think that's the best one. It's got them all up there.
This one's a little... All right, so I am, should have brought my glasses. Okay. It's really hard for me to see this.
Me too.
Oh, God. Thanks, Jay. Are we speaking of this spot right here? This is a curb from here to here.
Right.
It's curbed in between there. So what is the exact question again? Is it this approachment or this approachment?
I think it's the one at 38 that I'm concerned about.
This one right here?
These three bays are right there, are so close to the sidewalk, there's not room to even pull into those three bays.
Well, that's not, the parking lot is through here. This is the access, this is the access right here.
Yeah.
And there are parking spots, four parking spots right here, directly in front, and then another two right here. I don't know if you can see that on there. But this is that, this is where we're speaking of putting a small sign right there that has parking into this lot.
Okay.
But they never, you know, they never have a problem pulling into those four spots right there. They also don't have any, someone out there directing traffic.
Yeah.
People are going to pull up where they want to pull up. I mean, they're, you just, some things you just cannot help, and that's one of them. Maybe I'm not understanding the question.
No, no, it's helpful. I just wanted you to kind of walk me through that. I mean, I am supportive of expanding business, for sure. I do think that signage is a, would be a good add.
Yep.
So that's all my comments.
The big, you know, a big problem that I have been here for 25 years, when they widen this road right here, it really took up some of my land right there. Not exactly my property, but the amount of property between the street and the garage fronts that you see. How can I stop that? It was a state road. It had to go in. So again, this has been existing for 80 years, and it's a lot better than it's ever been. I mean, you can see the improvements over the years. And it's improving every year.
That's good.
Yep, every year. There's always something to do there, and I have no problem doing it. I love, I love my properties. You can tell.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. Commissioner Thomas?
My question to staff is what is, the way it's zoned now, what is that large parking lot allowed to do now? What is he allowed to do with the parking lot in the back? And once we change, what is he addition, will he be, in addition, what will he be able to do back there? Can he park? I see he parks, there are vehicles back there for lawn care companies that you're allowing them to park there or renting to them or whatever. And they have to park somewhere and might as well pay you to do it. But, but I, did I hear you say something before about, before we vote on it, it changes from what it is now or what it can be later, what?
What it is, is he's got an existing non-conforming use. So if he were approaching us today and saying, I want a new business, I'm building a new building, and I want to fence in a storage lot at the rear, we would say, no. You cannot just have outdoor storage. Basically, all of our code says no outdoor storage. We do permit, if you have vehicles that are waiting service, screening, usually with landscape. So we say, well, if you've got cars waiting, screen it with landscape. What he has here is, it's not, the use isn't changing. It's, we're just putting on the books that there is a special use. We're not requiring him to say, you cannot use that storage lot any longer as storage. Now, is he permitted to use it for anything other than the operations of his business? Formally, no. It should be all just vehicles in there that are for the operation of his mechanical business there. Do we regulate that fully? No. We don't know what activities are actually going on in that lot.
That's what it's meaning by the non-conforming?
It's, I would say it is a difficult thing, but what is not being questioned is he can operate there now, as is without a special use because he is legal non-conforming. We just cannot grant him an expansion without getting the special use for that on the books.
To allow him to keep what he has?
To essentially operate his business as he has been operating.
Good, very good. I support that, too. That's what I was getting at.
Good questions. I'm not sure if Commissioner Thomas has done yet.
I am. Yes, second time through. Heard you the first time on your presentation. Everything looks good. I don't have any problems. Support it 100%.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I do, too. Since this has been a business in a long time, you shouldn't be penalized for wanting to expand. And so for you to allow you to operate as you're operating, and so I'm fully in agreement.
Commissioner Carmichael?
I support it as well, and I congratulate you on the business being so good that you need to expand. And I would also compliment you on how exceptionally neat and well-kept those properties are.
Thank you. Thanks for visiting.
And as am I. Like we say, you're an existing building, business. We've changed our rules, so we're just making you legal to fit our rules. And now you can expand, and good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
And I like that you make your kid work.
You like...
Yeah, I like that. I like that.
Now, where do I get my mower fixed now?
We could still do it for you.
Are you, yeah, I was going to ask that.
Still do it.
Are you, are you going to go into that business? Or have you been doing that?
That's a neighborly friendly gesture to fix your lawnmower. Westmont only.
Okay, since we have a request for a special use, maybe we have a reading out of the findings of fact, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a findings of fact for both 38 and 42, so you're aware. PZ 16016, Dominic Tomassoni regarding 38 West Naperville Road, Westmont. Request for a special use to allow an automotive garage existing use at 38 West Naperville Road. Criteria number one: That the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Findings of fact: The applicant has utilized the property as an automotive repair garage for almost three decades. All repairs are performed indoors, outdoor vehicle storage is screened by a fence, and the use does not result in adverse odors, noise, light, or vibration. As such, continuing this use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. Criteria number two: That the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair the property values within the neighborhood. Findings of fact: The business is operated without complaints by neighbors for almost three decades. The business is located along a fairly busy road and is adjacent to other commercial properties. Continuing this use will not adversely impact surrounding properties. Criteria number three: That the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Findings of fact: No new structures or improvements are planned, and surrounding properties are fully developed. Allowing this use will not impact the ability of surrounding properties to develop. Criteria number four: That adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Findings of fact: The property is currently served by adequate utilities, accessways, and other facilities. Criteria number five: That adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Findings of fact: The property currently has sufficient access onto Naperville Road, and no new points of ingress/egress are proposed. This business does not generate significant vehicular traffic. Criteria number six: That the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. Findings of fact: No zoning variances are sought, and the property otherwise conforms to applicable codes or is grandfathered from recent code enactments. The criteria number seven: The proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition seven. Findings of fact: The rear vehicle storage area is completely enclosed by an existing solid fence which screens vehicles from view.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. Therefore, the findings of fact for a special use are adopted and approved. Under Planning and Zoning Item 16016, Item A, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, a special use permit request for an existing automotive garage located at 38 West Naperville Road in the B2 General Business District with existing non-conforming exterior storage of vehicles awaiting service or customer pickup.
So moved?
Seconded.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Carmichael. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Okay, we have a special use request for the expansion. May we have a reading, please?
PZ 16016, Dominic Tomassoni regarding 42 West Naperville Road, Westmont. Request for a special use to allow an automotive repair garage at 42 West Naperville Road. Criteria number one: That the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Findings of fact: The applicant has utilized adjacent property as an automotive repair garage for almost three decades, and now seeks to expand this use to an adjacent building. All repairs will be performed indoors, outdoor vehicle storage is screened in by a fence, and the use should not result in adverse odors, noise, light, or vibration. As such, this use at this location will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. Criteria number two: That the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. Findings of fact: This business is operated on adjacent property without complaints by neighbors for almost three decades. This expanded location will be located along a fairly busy road and is adjacent to other commercial properties. Expanding this use will not adversely impact surrounding properties. Criteria number three: That the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Findings of fact: No new structures or improvements are planned, and surrounding properties are fully developed. Continuing this use will not impact the ability of surrounding properties to develop. Criteria number four: That adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Findings of fact: The property is currently served by adequate utilities, accessways, and other facilities. Criteria number five: That adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Findings of fact: The property currently has sufficient access onto Naperville Road, and no new points of ingress/egress are proposed. This business does not generate significant vehicular traffic. Criteria number six: That the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as such regulations may be in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. Findings of fact: No zoning variances are sought, and the property otherwise conforms to all applicable codes or is grandfathered from recent code enactments. Criteria number seven: The proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition number seven. Findings of fact: The rear vehicle storage area is completely enclosed by an existing solid fence, and this area will only be used for customer drop-off and pickup of vehicles versus general auto storage.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. Therefore, the findings of fact for a special use are hereby adopted and approved. Under Planning and Zoning Item 16016, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Item B. Special use permit request for expansion of an automotive garage to be located at 42 West Naperville Road in the B2 General Business District.
So moved?
Seconded.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Sharp. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir, you have our recommendation for approval, and you go through the same thing at Board of Trustees. Good luck to you.
Have a great evening.
Next item. Planning and zoning item 16017, Ultima Motorsports regarding the property located at 180 West Ogden for the following. A. A special use permit request to expand an existing used automotive dealership in the B2 General Business District. Item B. Zoning code variance request to allow parking within the front yard setback. Item C. Zoning code variance request to permit the sale of used automobiles within 500 feet of a residence district. Item D. Site and landscaping plan approval.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Joe Gaben. I operate the business at 150, I'm sorry, Ogden Avenue, Ultima Motorsports. If you recall, I came in front of you about two years ago and asked for the same thing we're asking today, which is allow us to sell used vehicles on the premises. We've been there for about 18 months, and we're having a good, we're having a good time selling cars there. And I hope some of you have been on the site and see what kind of condition, what kind of cars, what kind of reputation and image we've presented in the town. Business is doing well. We, our sales have, are up to about two and a half... We, our, our sales have, are up to about $2.5 million a month, and we continue to see some growth in the market. The opportunity has come up to take over or lease to own the property next door at 180 Ogden, and the property has been vacant for a while. It's gone, it's gone some hard times, and the operating entity that was in the property or working on turning it into a Hardee's has gone through its Chapter 11 bankruptcy. The owners tried leasing it to other entities, other operators, without much success, and here we are, trying to take it over and expand our business. Unlike the first applicant, I get along, by the way, with chill.
Nice.
That's true.
So, we've been working at this for a while, and the, the, some of the back and forth with the site layout has been resolved, I hope, and wanted to discuss it, and offered the opportunity to answer some questions, if we have any. This where you display this?
Yes.
All right. So our property, our property 150 is right here. We're proposing to access the site, this is Ogden Avenue, obviously. We're proposing to access the site from our property through a cut in the curb through our property without disturbing anything else on the, on the perimeter on Ogden or on Washington. So we would be coming through possibly an 18-inch brick-paved roadway from one curb to the next curb and across the grass, and just to utilize this property as storage only. We do not need the building, we will not be taking the building down, we will not alter the building, we won't even enter the building. All we need this property for at this time is storage and display. If some of you know our business model, we are not a high-traffic business. We, currently, we're selling about three cars a day, average, on a monthly basis, about 70 cars a month. In the process of selling three cars a day, we see five customers a day. We don't see a lot of customers. We have no service. Every once in a while, we get someone that's just bringing their young child to check out a car, just, and he's not a buyer. But for the most part, we see on average about six customers a day. The purpose for using this lot is just for storage. It will not be your typical used car lot where people are coming on the premises all day long and in and out. We, we've kicked the idea around of closing the entrance of Ogden if you wish for us to do so. We're indifferent about it. We don't need it unless you tell us, or unless you follow the recommendations from the fire department, that it's gotta stay open. We're open either way. To lower the impact on the residents along north of us on Washington, we're agreeing, and we, and we actually welcome it, to put a sign right, right here as you exit the property, going back on Washington, south on Washington, we'll put a sign there that says, "No right exit." Cannot turn right. Any questions that I can answer?
Is that your presentation, Ed?
Yes.
Okay. Staff, can we have comments, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What you have before you is 180 West Ogden, as the applicant has discussed, expansion of his existing use at 150 West Ogden into this. To provide for that, first, you would need to consider a special use. For used car sales, there are three requirements in addition to the typical special use standards that need to be considered. The first is that there should be an approved landscaping plan for screening of vehicles. As he indicated, this is primarily a storage lot. There are some landscaping requirements. He has received comments back from our consultants on landscaping at this point, and I will point out that the site plan that's on the screen there, it was his first submittal. What you have in your packets is a later revision, so it already went through a first round of comments. So...
This is the current?
There is landscape that is required. We will be requiring some street trees, some improved landscape along Washington, some improved landscape along the rear of the property to the residential. At this point, we have not received a submittal based on those comments, so we don't have that to show you currently. The other two requirements is that there must satisfy, establish that there is no appreciable traffic congestion or hazard to pedestrian safety, and that the special use cannot be within 500 feet of a residence district. That's the business or the parking. In this case, there is an existing residential home directly to the north. So it is, that generates a variance request. When I get to the variance request, that will be one of the requests, is the variance to the 500 feet. So in terms of variances for him to occupy this lot, first, is that the existing parking spaces for Hardee's, or the restaurant that was there, are actually in the front yard setback for Ogden Avenue. The front yard setback is 30 feet. The parking is approximately at 20 feet. So by converting this from customer parking, which is temporary transient, into permanent parking, he does require a variance for parking in the front yard setback. It is a variance that we require of all the other dealerships that do park there. So he is requesting a variance to the front yard setback. And then, as discussed before, he is requesting a variance to the minimum distance of 500 feet to the residential. Just as in the landscape plan, he has received comments from engineering plans. There are some substantial requirements that engineering is required, is requiring of the project. At this point, we have not had a second submittal acknowledging that all the requests for the engineering will be accommodated. So this is as far as we've gotten this project before I can bring it to you. As always, I can answer questions if necessary.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go to the public. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item whatsoever? Please, if you would. If you haven't already signed in, please sign in.
I've signed in.
Give us your name.
My son's signed in. I just want to make you aware that I'm the owner of the residence right here. I wasn't aware of any of this, but...
Okay, Ms.?
Yes.
If you would, could you, no, come up to the podium, because the home audience cannot hear you.
Okay. So my name is Anna Shaw. I own the property bordering this.
All right.
I do have some concerns about this. The traffic out of this driveway is very close to my, I just have a two-car driveway right here, and I believe that traffic, hmm, I don't think it's gonna be good for my residence. I also would like to know what they're gonna do with all of this here, because I am at the bottom of a hill, pretty much, and the last house I've had flooding before. I just want to make sure there's nothing that's gonna be built here or put here that will make any drainage or any kind of stormwater or anything into my property. Do you have any?
I do, actually.
Okay. This is my son, Michael.
How are you?
Hello, Mike.
Hi. Hi. I actually know the guys at Ultima. Great guys, you guys do great business. Do have a question, though. Are there gonna be work hours? Because you do have the trucks come in sometimes, 10:00, 11:00, 12:00 o'clock and drop off cars.
Hours, sir?
No, in that lot. Are they gonna be coming into that lot and dropping cars off?
We don't drop off at hours.
Okay. Somebody is.
Not ours, but at the Ogden, they drop to Lincoln.
In that parking lot?
Yeah, they drop there, and they drive it over to the Lincoln building. It's not ours.
Okay.
Our hours at 8:00.
Oh, those aren't yours?
No.
Those aren't your trucks, then? Okay.
They use, their 18-wheeler comes through that parking lot, drops off, and they take them down to Ogden.
Well, then we'll stop then, once you take control of this. Okay.
I have another question. Do you think it might behoove you to close this driveway and just use the front ones? Go right around the corner? I don't know.
He wouldn't mind. The fire department wants to keep it open.
That's fine. I'm just trying to figure out how...
He would close off both the both.
I think they're good neighbors. I'm trying to be a good neighbor. I'm just trying to figure out a lot of traffic here.
If I can tell you one thing about our operation, first of all, we, this is, this is the spot here where we said, we'll gladly put this sign that says, "No, do not turn right."
Okay. And what's that are there are just existing, which is not gonna do any more?
No. With our discussions with the, with the village engineer, we are required to provide, you have, obviously you have a fence, like a five-foot fence or something?
Six-foot fence.
Right. We are required to provide a complete landscape screening between you and I.
And there's an easement, it's not only about six feet, and there's some trees already.
Right.
You're not gonna cut the trees?
We're not gonna cut the trees. We, if anything, even though we're not even occupying it yet, we're not even paying rent yet, but we've cleaned it up recently, if you notice.
Yes. It's great to have something there. I mean, it was being used at the dump ground when nothing was there.
Right. We noticed that, we cleaned it up.
And you're not gonna use that existing building, or?
No.
Create another building?
It doesn't, it doesn't fit well with our, with our business and our use, so within the next couple of years, we may, we have the option to flip our lease into a purchase, and if we purchase it, we'll take that building down. As I was saying before, we see five customers a day. We don't see a lot of customers, and the impact on you and the rest of the neighborhood is a whole lot better than a fast-food restaurant. So, I mean, instead of 500 cars coming out every day, you'll probably have 10.
I wasn't sure you were going to make that some kind of, I don't know what you were gonna do with the existing building.
Keep it locked up. And as far as the drainage that you, you inquire about, alternate drainage, the side drainage comes this way right now, and it's gonna stay this way. We're not touching, we're, we're not disturbing the asphalt, we're not doing any regrading, everything stays as it is.
And they're not gonna be washing the cars right there?
Uh, no, we have, we have full wash base inside and detail and...
And you got, there's some concerns.
Are there any further public comments? Seeing no hands raised, we'll close the public discussion just to, the fire department has a letter, they have approved the site plan. And according to this, it looks like one of the two lot entrances need to remain accessible. So probably any way state of Illinois would control closing a entrance, since it's a state highway?
The state would always support the elimination of driveways.
Okay.
But again, it's difficult to take one away on an existing property that has one already. There wouldn't be any objections if a driveway is removed.
All right, we'll start with Commissioner Carmichael.
I have a question for engineering regarding the requirement for a sidewalk along Washington.
Yes. Now, he is, his project is triggering a site development permit for the driveway and for the site itself. So part of the site development permit would be requiring sidewalk to be constructed and completed along all frontages. They have one along Ogden Avenue already, so the sidewalk would be required along Washington. However, it's a sidewalk that leads to nowhere, it's an incomplete in the middle of the block, but you've seen a number of sites where we've had new development where they installed a sidewalk, but it doesn't, it is not completed throughout the entire block itself. This one is a special case, only because in this case they're trying not to do any major improvements on the site. They just want to utilize an existing parking lot. So with that triggering, we would, staff, at least on my end, I would support cash-in-lua for the sidewalk improvement until later date, that if there's a possibility of something in the future to be developed, and that something, the sidewalk can be constructed at that time.
If I may add, the only thing that has triggered this requirement is us putting a brick-paved driveway between us and the lot next door, which seems kind of excessive requirements and all these requirements for curbs and sidewalks.
It sounds like you saw from that, though.
Well, along the same lines, that excess, that exit onto Washington, if, is there gonna be any customer parking on this lot?
No. Our customer parking is on the original building.
So I would think that, that exit onto Washington would be a moot issue, whether it's, it would need to be reconstructed to, so that right turns couldn't be made.
We do have the same similar situation in other car dealerships, the similar complaint from residents in the areas, the cut through, test-driving the vehicles that are cutting through the neighborhood, so that is potentially just trying to eliminate an issue that exists with all our car dealerships that is adjacent to our residential areas. They have also, in some cases...
So would that exit have to be reconstructed, or it's?
If the...
As a condition?
No.
The sign?
It is a, the sign would suffice from engineering standpoint, but that would not prevent the vehicles from actually making the right turn.
Understood. I, I support this.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I do, too. I would call for minimal changes having to me, me, both on landscaping and on sidewalks, considering the condition here. If he just drove over the grass between the two, he wouldn't even be here. That's all I got.
Where'd I hear that before? Commissioner Pill?
Did I hear that right?
Yeah, you heard it.
Okay, good. Yeah, just checking. I, I, I like the idea. I mean, this is in keeping with our comprehensive plan. It's to establish an auto corridor with higher-end cars, which helps the tax base, which helps every single resident who lives in this town. And you've been a good neighbor, everything you've said two years ago, I've been at numerous hearings where you've been at, every single thing has happened as you've said it, and I have no doubt that you'll continue with this. I wish you luck, and I support it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
Somewhere in our packet, I read somewhere about painting, painting the building so it doesn't look like a Hardee's, which would confuse people into coming in. If you would throw some, I know you want to get in, get out, you know, and just have a parking lot, but if you could throw some paint on there, on the red, it would probably cut down on people thinking they're going, because it looks like a Hardee's.
I, I would be open to painting it. We would have to get approval from, from the landlord.
Yeah.
There, even the minor changes that we're proposing to do here, we've had to sign agreements that whatever we do, we, if we don't buy it, we have to put it back together, the same orange and whatever color it's on, the salmon and orange.
Right, so, okay.
So if we can, I do want to paint it, but we're gonna paint it the same colors as Ultima.
Okay, so...
And once you fill the lot also, that's gonna, I think it's gonna discourage people from pulling in.
Right.
There's gonna be nowhere to pull in.
Right.
Well, just a very successful Hardee's.
Yeah.
It's a busy Hardee's.
All the biscuits.
I support it.
Commissioner Sharp?
I didn't hear anything about, I guess, justification for the variance to, this is a special use, so it's a variance within 500 feet of the residential. Doesn't sound like your immediate neighbor is staunchly opposed to it, and obviously from the surrounding context, there's plenty of precedent to grant you this variance. I do have concerns about the Washington Street exit, since now that this is gonna be turned into an auto use, and it will set precedent for auto use on this lot in the future, whether or not you buy it. And I think it is a good opportunity to mitigate test-driving in the neighborhoods. So I would support this, just with the qualifier of actually kind of doing with a pork chop, you know, type of arrangement where you can only turn left out of the entrance, out of, on Washington Street? Does that make sense?
Yes. I know exactly what you're, what you're looking for. Well, again, our issue is with the landlord. I don't own the property, and alterations to it is, is a lengthy and agreement-driven process with the landlord.
Okay.
Good news is that's where the village is right of way. There's... Does the landlord have an opinion what could be constructed on the Village's right-of-way? Just talking about a driveway apron.
Mm-hmm.
At, at, here, at, at the end of the day, if, if someone is going to exit the parking lot, knowing that there's a sign that says, "Do not turn right," and they still turn right, they're going to find a way to turn right no matter what you do.
I, I think the issue, though, is if it's your employees versus, you know, customers, so that if...
My employ, but we have no purpose to, we have nothing going on on Washington.
And I, and I think the commission is just saying it needs to be, it needs to be controlled if it's, if it is coming from there, so...
I- i- if, 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 if it is an issue and, uh, I would, I would deal with it at the time, whether it's through training, through whatever signage, uh, additional signage, but I, I, I ask you not to put a requirement right now to spend 10, 15, $20,000 and disturb this whole area and force, you know, engineering's and permits, just, just because a porter may do it at some point in, in, in their, during their employment.
Okay, that's all I had, I, I agree with, uh, the other commissioner about paint. Uh, I think paint would be a good idea, but it's also more maintenance, and I definitely take your point about not owning the building yet, so I think it makes sense to hold off on that until...
Commissioner Bartel?
Um, the landscaping plan submitted is inadequate, uh, is that, is that something that's going to be rectified, or...
Well, uh, we're going to need to get a permit...
Okay.
To, uh, to do the driveway and the curb cuts anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So, when we go in for the permit, that's the time when you can, you can get us for whatever engineering has, 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 has required.
All right.
Okay, I have a few questions. Um, how many parking spots are in the Ogden Avenue setback now? It looks like there might be only one.
Uh, it looks like, uh, three?
Number 47?
47, 46, and one.
Partial 46 and partial one, so we're talking three spaces. All right. Um, what about the 100, 100,000 that's order, that's, uh, owed to Westmont for the water? What's going on here?
We're pursuing that through the, the current bankruptcy legal proceedings, so that will be separate from the special use.
Okay. Uh, do-do, do-do, do-do. Okay, this, uh, we could, if we so chose, he would have the option of blocking off one of the, either the ingress or the egress onto Ogden, very cheaply, if you got these concrete, uh, parking, uh, curbs that are in, uh, parking lots?
Yes.
Maybe 100 bucks a piece or something, lay them across one of the driveways and...
There's actually about 100 of them sitting on this parking lot, and they're all brand-new, if anyone want any.
So, just move them around then. Likewise, on, uh, Washington Avenue, uh, staff?
Mm-hmm.
Is it advantageous to us to keep Washington Avenue exit open? Because he could do the same thing on Washington.
Got a few more.
Well, you'd have the, uh, you would have at least, uh, the ingress, which was, uh, built for Hardee's off of Ogden, that could be. Or you could keep them both, I'm just offering suggestions here.
Do we have any use for Washington? If you want to close Washington, close Washington.
Well, you could close Washington yourself, just pull your, uh, concrete...
No, but if you, if the fire department allows me to, I'll, I'll put the, I'll put the...
You know, then you solve the main problem of driving down...
We'll just, we'll just put the curb, the curb stops and...
Yeah, you're not spending any money, you've accomplished, and we're keeping the traffic off of Washington.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm for that, I, I don't need it.
Yeah, we, we can clarify that with the fire department, but if they're supportive with closing Washington, I, I'd prefer to have the curb at Washington and allow for full access through Ogden.
All right, whatever, but I mean, this is something that can be done inexpensively, not costing the gentleman any money whatsoever. How about a sign? You got a separate building here, he's allowed signage.
I, I don't need a sign.
Considered a sign or anything? Huh?
I don't need a sign.
Maybe you want to put a sign on so nobody thinks you are a Hardee's.
You want to give me a sign, I'll...
You are allowed to put a sign on the address, the building. It's a separate building from your existing, so if you want...
We haven't investigated that, well, we, we will, because there is actually a pedestal that's still on site that we can use. But the, the only problem with the sign is, we do not want to encourage customers into coming into this property next door, into the new property, we want people coming to our building.
I see, okay. Uh, do-do, do-do, do-do. And about the only other thing I see, they've marked out these existing trees here, you'd do a favor if you put them all down, they're all cottonwoods, the lousiest tree that they ever put on this earth.
Maybe they like them.
Uh...
And don't touch that one cottonwood where the, where the two lights are, in the middle of your parking lot, there's a bird nest out there. So, you get in trouble with the Audubon Society. Peter?
Right.
All right, yeah, strike that last from the record. Okay, any further comments, commissioners? Nothing?
No.
Okay, we have a special use request, maybe we have a reading of the findings effect, please.
Ultima Motorsports regarding 180 West Ogden Avenue. Request for a special use to allow an expansion of an existing automobile dealership use in the B2 General Business District. Criteria one, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Findings affect, the applicant operates an existing automobile dealership on adjacent property and proposes to expand this use to the subject property to be used for passive inventory parking purposes. This vehicle parking use as part of an automobile dealership will not endanger the public health, safety, morals, or welfare. Criteria two, the special use will not be interest to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. Properties on three sides are zoned B2 General Business District and developed with commercial uses. The property is located along the heavily trafficked Ogden Avenue corridor, and the property was previously approved for a fast food restaurant. This passive vehicle inventory parking use will not adversely impact surrounding properties. Criteria three, the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Surrounding properties are fully developed and no new structures or development are proposed for this property. As such, this use will not impact the ability of surrounding properties to redevelop. Criteria four, adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The property is served by adequate utilities, drainage, and other facilities, and no new improvements are needed or proposed. Criteria five, adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Although certain points of ingress and egress will be left open for emergency vehicle access, the primary pr- traffic to and from this property will come from the adjacent auto dealership owned by the applicant, and this use will not increase traffic congestion on the public streets. Criteria six, the special use shall in all the respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except if such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the planning commission. Except for certain zoning variances sought by the applicant, this use conforms with the applicable regulations of the B2 District and other codes and ordinances of the village. Criteria seven, the proposed use meets the special conditions of special conditions two, four, and seven. The applicant will provide enhanced and sufficient landscaping, which will screen vehicles awaiting service or customer pickup. The primary flow of vehicles to and from the property will occur between that adjacent auto dealership owned by the applicant. This expanded use will not cause appreciable traffic congestion. The applicant does not meet the 500-foot separation requirement from a residential district, but seeks a variance from this requirement.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement, therefore, the findings affect for a special use are adopted, approved, and adopted. Under planning and zoning item 16017, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item A, a special use permit request to expand an existing used automobile dealership in the B2 General Business District.
So moved?
Second. Motion by Commissioner Bartel, seconded by Commissioner Pill, question on the motion, uh, Commissioner Sharp?
Uh, yes, I just would like to ask if we could add a qualifier, just for posterity in the record, that the, if we, uh, recommend positively that the, uh, petitioner follow up with the fire department to verify that we could in fact close the Washington Street access, that's all.
Who motioned?
Would, uh...
I guess that's me, I could, motion?
Okay, would you care to amend the motion?
Sure.
Okay, uh, second?
Yes.
Okay, the motion has been amended. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Okay, we need a reading of the findings affect for a variance.
Ultima Motorsports regarding 180 West Ogden Avenue. Request for a variance to allow parking within the required front yard setback. Criteria one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The owner proposes to utilize the property for passive vehicle inventory storage for its automobile dealership. The site is already developed and paved with parking within the front yard setback, and the applicant proposes to utilize this existing parking. It would be cost prohibitive to remove existing asphalt parking to comply with the setback requirement, and the applicant could not yield a reasonable return. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The applicant seeks to utilize the existing parking spaces within the front yard setback for pass- passive vehicle inventory storage and display. Criteria three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Numerous other properties in the area have similar encroachments. The applicant is proposing no new improvements and instead will utilize existing parking spaces. This variation, if granted, will not alter the character of the area.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement, or for the findings of fact for a zoning code variance request are adopted and approved. Under planning and zoning item 16017, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item B, zoning code variance request to allow parking within the front yard setback. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Okay, maybe we have a reading of the findings of fact for our other zoning code variance.
Ultima Motorsports regarding 180 West Ogden Avenue. Request for a variance to allow parking of the sale of used automobiles within 500 feet of a residential district. Criteria one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The applicant currently operates an automobile dealership immediately adjacent to this property and which is adjacent to residential property. The applicant cannot use this property and yield a reasonable return without this variance. Criteria two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The property was previously approved and developed for a high-volume fast food restaurant with a drive-through lane. This passive vehicle inventory parking use will have minimal impact on surrounding properties. Criteria three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The property is located along the heavily trafficked Ogden Avenue corridor, and this use is similar to other commercial uses, including auto dealerships adjacent to residential districts. This property is fully improved, and this variation, if granted, will not alter the character of the area.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement, therefore, the findings affect are adopted and approved. Under, uh, planning and zoning 16017, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item C, zoning code variance request to permit the sale of used automobiles within 500 feet of a residence district.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Carmichael, question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Uh, okay, item D, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, site and landscaping plan approval.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Bartel, question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir, you have our recommendations, they are only recommendations. And the Board of Trustees staff can tell you when you'll go before them.
Great, thank you very much.
Good luck to you, sir. Okay, next item on the agenda, planning and zoning item 16018, LWV Odessa Ponds LLC, regarding the properties located at 6704 to 24 Echo Lane, 6703 to 24 Tudor Lane, 6703 to 24 Alpine Lane, 6703 to 24 Park Lane, 6703 to 24 Lake Shore Drive. It's the same address for Cedar Lane, Vale Drive, Aspen Lane, Maple Lane. Item A, map amendment request to rezone from our four general residence district to a planned development overlay district in the underlying our four general residence district with the following exceptions from the zoning code. One, exception to reduce the required amount of usable open space which is currently non-conforming. Item B, zoning code variance request to exceed the maximum number of allowable accessory structures to construct clubhouse facilities. Item C, zoning code variance request to exceed the maximum size of an accessory clubhouse structure. Item D, zoning code variance request to exceed the maximum height of an accessory clubhouse structure. Item E, preliminary plan of subdivision to consolidate the properties into two lots. Item F, site and landscaping plan approval for the construction of clubhouse facilities. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, uh, Russ Whitaker, I'm an attorney at the law firm of Rosenov and Whitaker, uh, 30 West Jefferson Street, Suite 200 in Naperville. Uh, here this evening on behalf of the owner of the property, LWV Odessa Ponds LLC. I was actually before you, uh, a couple of years ago regarding this, uh, the Eagle Creek apartment complex, uh, same ownership group, uh, different name, uh, but same principles in that deal. Uh, Eagle Creek was a similar, similarly situated apartment complex that had struggled, was underperforming for a period of time, uh, was purchased by, uh, this ownership group. They've come in, um, added a clubhouse, done renovations. Similar concept to what's happening, uh, here at, um, uh, what is not, what was formerly the Ponds and is now Westmont Village Apartments. Um, the, the property is located at, uh, 67th and, and Cass Avenue, the southwest corner. Uh, it consists of approximately 30 acres. It was developed in the late 70s, um, it was done in Westmont as a planned development, and we've got some planned development plots that are recorded with the county, um, that have Village of Westmont signatures on them, so we know it was done in Westmont, but we have absolutely no ordinance paperwork or any other documentation regarding the development, so we're kind of grasping, not unders, not knowing how it was all approved or necessarily, uh, how it fits within codes. Uh, so I, I think similar to the automotive case that you had before you earlier today, we're coming before you, we're expanding, we're improving the community, uh, and at the same time, we're looking to overlay the planned unit development and address all of the non-conforming, uh, use issues so that we know we've got a, an ability to operate the property, uh, on an ongoing basis. Um, with respect to the property, what you see here, um, oh, um...
I think we're having some AV issues right now, he's been able to check it a couple of times, so I apologize.
So, I have a, uh, I have an aerial map here, uh, that shows, uh, that shows the property as it's situated, uh, within the surrounding community, um, apparently not visible, though. The property, uh, as I mentioned, was developed in the 70s, approved in four phases. Um, the property consists today of 31 separate buildings. What's very unique about the property and what created major obstacles in getting us to the point where we are today is that rather than having a single owner, this property is divided into a bunch of different ownership units. Um, each phase was developed, and in each, in each of the four phases, there were individual building pads, and then, uh, 31 total building pads on the property, and then on each building pad, there was a building constructed, and each building... was subsequently divided into three ownership units. So you had 31 buildings, you had 93 ownership units. So we, I think we had 67 different owners of property that we ultimately purchased, started the process. It was about a year-long process in order to acquire all the property. We had a massive closing where I think we acquired 50, we had 50 closings in a matter of one week, and then followed up, and that occurred at the end of October last year, and then we followed up and secured the last of the properties to the point where we have 100% ownership of all of the properties as of January of this year. So, again, 31 buildings, 93 ownership units, each ownership unit consists of 18 separate apartment units, so I think there's 588 total units. Of that, each building has a little bit different unit mix. We have 166 one-bedroom units, 419 two-bedroom units, and 23 three-bedroom units. With the divided ownership, there is a Property Owners Association that ideally governs and maintains the property. Given the divided ownership that occurred over an extended period of time, there was a lot of disagreement on how the property should be maintained and how the property should be managed, so there was frankly a lot of deferred maintenance that was happening on the campus, which resulted in depressed prices, which resulted in depressed rents, which resulted in, I think, some problems in the community that we're looking to come in and fix as we, as we renovate the, as we renovate the property and sort of turn it over. So as, as we acquired the property, we kind of had a plan, a bunch of things that we were putting in place in order to reposition the property, intent is that we would hold the property long-term. But as, as we're going through this process, coming to the village to build clubhouses as part of, as part of our restructuring of the campus, we are being conscious of being able to set the property up for a future sale. So I think as we, as we talk about kind of the objectives of ownership, since they've acquired the property, from the date we, we sort of finished acquiring 100% interest, we've been, and even before that, we've been working with the village on property maintenance issues. As I said, there was significant deferred maintenance. Since acquiring the property, we've done a thorough cleanup of the property, just, just cleaning up trash that was accumulated around the property. There's a dumpster replacement program that's underway. Amazing if you have actual corrals for dumpsters and not trash overflowing, how it cleans up a property. There have been utility replacements that have been under, that are underway in order to fix stormwater and other issues. We've come in and we fixed leaky roofs. There are interior renovations of apartments that hadn't been renovated in 30 or 40 years. And there is, I don't think it's started yet, but there is a parking lot resurfacing that will be underway in the near term. So there's a, there was a major investment to acquire all of these properties. There is a significant investment that is ongoing and will be continuing to renovate and reposition this campus for the betterment, not only of ownership and tenants, but also for the village at large. As, as part of the continued plan, there is a plan to unify ownership and maintenance. Under, under the prior ownership structure with all of the different owners, there was no sort of uniform policies on who was being rented to, on what the, what the rules and regulations were in apartments, how you could store things outside, whether you could store things outside, where you could park a car if disabled cars were allowed to park there. There's just a lack of rules and regulations. So we've come in with unified ownership now. There are very clear rules and regulations for all of the tenants in the property. With respect to the tenants in the property, there's been a process, when, when we bought the property, we were amazed to see some leases that were 10 years out of date. So there's been a process by which we've undergone retenanting the property as part of updating and renewing every lease on the property. We do do mandatory criminal background checks, so where there was some element of criminal activity on the campus, we think that has largely been cleaned up because, because of the criminal background checks and because of the turnover we're doing with the retenancy. One of, as we move forward, we do, we are looking to consolidate ownership. A lot of problems resulted from there being up to 96 different, 93 different owners on the property. That's not in the village's best interest, that's not in our best interest moving forward. So our goal is to take all of those various ownership units and to collapse them down. We are proposing that the property would be maintained with two separate ownership units. We're sort of dividing the campus into, I think it's 16 and 17, or the math doesn't work out, 15 and 16 buildings on the, on each side. Each side would have a location where a clubhouse could be built. Today, we're proposing a clubhouse that would be shared by the entire campus. At some future date, if a portion of the property was sold off, there's an opportunity to add an additional campus if there was divided ownership of the two parcels. One of the reasons we're looking at two parcels is with the property being 580, 558 units, that's large in today's marketplace for a, for an apartment complex. If you're building a new apartment complex, you're usually not below 200 units, and often you're not above 350 units. So at 558 units, we're kind of double the number we think we want to be. So by dividing the property in half, it gets us into a sweet spot for institutional investors, and that's who, at the end of the day, if this property is eventually sold, when the property is eventually sold, all properties eventually sold, is the likely buyer of this. And I think that's good news for the village because as you have institutional owners of property, institutional owners of property are taking money, they're reinvesting in the property because they're looking to maintain the property in the long-term, and you're not going to end up with a situation like you had a year ago before we purchased the property. We are modernizing the community. Old pool was recently removed. The pool was, was in poor condition, and it's been taken out. We're coming before you tonight with plans for one clubhouse and look, and approvals for a second clubhouse. We're not seeking to build the second clubhouse presently, but we do want to get those approvals in place, so it's really just an engineering exercise, whether it be one, two, five, or 10 years in the future, if we do want to build that second clubhouse. A couple of, a couple of pictures. Well, I guess we don't have this operational?
Yeah, he says, he can't get it.
Okay. So I, again, I have pictures of a pretty... I don't think that's going to work.
Another question.
I thought maybe he fell asleep back there.
In the yellow box.
Oh, in the yellow box. All right, so at least, at least, so this is a planning and development plot we're working on. This is based on the survey that was conducted when we, when we purchased the property. So you can see here where all of the buildings are sighted. If we could get a little closer? Can we zoom? If it focuses, you can see layout of, layout of detention basins, you can see layout of parking areas. This, this includes all of the detail of the property. As part of the planning and development, we would be solidifying this as a site plan for the campus, and this would become a restrictive document governing any future development. In other words, if we were to change anything on the campus, if we tore down a building and wanted to rebuild a building, we would have to do it consistent with the plan documents being approved. I, I guess we were talking a little bit about the clubhouse. The clubhouse is intended to go sort of in the middle of the campus. There's a large detention basin that sort of separates the campus into two halves. I do on the laptop.
Russ? Russ? Russ?
Yeah.
If I may, maybe it would be helpful to remind people, you'll be back again, won't you?
Yes, so...
This is more of an informational meeting this evening for that purpose, so maybe you'll have the ability to have the IT technology then to reassure some of the people in the audience.
Yeah, and I mean, we can certainly, we can even bring, that's, that's not too bad, though. We can, and we can bring printouts in case we have problems next time. But the, this is, this is a picture of the proposed clubhouse that's being built. It would be high-quality, 6,000, approximately 6,000 square foot clubhouse. Clubhouses, interestingly, aren't permit, aren't permitted as a, as a use in the R4 zoning district, despite the fact that the R4 zoning district is a zoning district that would accommodate a, an apartment community. I think that's just a vestige of the municipal code being old. So we are, we're seeking approval of the clubhouse as an accessory use, and because it is an accessory use, it requires various components of relief, from size to height, and... And, and other, other elements of it being an accessory use. As, as Mr. Carrera had pointed out, there were, there were some issues with the notice as we were working through with staff, so we wanted to kind of come and open a discussion, have, have an introduction of the issue. We will be re-noticing. We've got a whole stack of envelopes back here to deliver to staff before we leave tonight. I know notice is being sent to the newspaper this evening or tomorrow morning, and we'll be back on August 3rd to continue discussion, so I will come. I've got a PowerPoint already done, we can go through that in more detail. But I think just from the standpoint of tonight, the general discussion is that I think this is all good news for people. We're not looking to do, to add more units, we're not looking to fundamentally change the campus, we're looking to preserve what is existing, we're looking to make what is existing better. The real primary element of what we're adding is a reparational facility, there's a clubhouse. That clubhouse will have a business center that will be usable by residents. That business center will have an Amazon drop-off location where if you order something on Amazon, they have a locker system. They send you an email and say, "Your package has been delivered, it's in locker number 10, and here's your code, and you can go pick it up." So there's not packages being strewn about. It will have a fitness center, so people can come and, and do workouts in the, in the clubhouse facility. The clubhouse facility will have a leasing center and a business center. It will be staffed seven days a week, somewhere between eight and 10 or 12 hours a day. So it will be open, open for leasing activities pretty much every day except for holidays. There is a pool that's being added. There is a very nice patio off the back of the clubhouse that's being added. So we think it, we're well amenitizing the, the campus above and beyond what has existed previously. And with the improvements to the campus, we see, we see rents climbing, and we see occupancy increasing, all for the benefit of the village. So with that and the technology glitches we're having here, I guess I'll turn it over and ask if there's other questions I can answer right now.
Okay, staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like the applicant has, has explained, what is before you is, is for the Westmont Village Apartments, which is an existing complex. First is to consider to rezone the property as an R4 with a PD overlay. By doing the PD overlay, we're already kind of grandfathering some of the existing conditions that are there, such as the multiple buildings that are on site. There is one exception that's on, on before you today, but this is to be amended when they come back to us at the next meeting. Currently, it's the exception to reduce the required amount of usable open space. If you remember, there's a required amount of 250 square feet for every unit. We've come across this with a previous case that's, that's been before us. Usable open space is very hard to classify, especially in this project because the ponds, although outdoor, are not technically usable. The parking lots are not usable open space. What we do know with this project is that the construction of the clubhouses is reducing the amount of usable open space. First off, there is a valid argument that it is still space that is accessible by the residents and the tenants that are there, but it does not formally meet our definition of usable open space because it's enclosed. Moving on, there are variances that are requested because we are doing variances when we feel that the code warrants it cannot be done as an exception or as a waiver, as we have done in the past. The variances that are before us are basically all attributed to the clubhouses. There are accessory structures, they're larger than, than our accessory structures, our accessory structure code is actually written for sheds. So it says that a shed can't be more than 144 square feet, 15 feet high, and you can only have one of them. Essentially, these buildings are exceeding all of those. In particular, I think, actually, Lot 1 would be the newly created lot that is to the west. That does not have an accessory structure, but we would be approving the future clubhouse there. It's Lot 2, which is the building to the front, which already has a clubhouse. That clubhouse will be converted into a maintenance structure, so it will have a second accessory structure on that lot. As he's explained, they are reducing the underlying parcels and PIN numbers and tax ID numbers that have existed, which has allowed the multiple ownership of the buildings, which has caused significant turmoil for the village in terms of code enforcement and getting a uniformity down there, into two properties. Currently, with one clubhouse that will serve the entire property with future, future plans that another one could be built to serve if the second half of the property was sold off. And then finally, Site and Landscaping Approval. As he's discussed, tonight, there, we will, we welcome the discussion, we welcome the public hearing, we will come back, we will republish with all of these, in addition to some additional ones that are basically existing nonconforming things that the applicant would like to have on the record in part of the PD agreement, so that it's all written down. Because we did not publish for all those, we cannot consider those tonight. And as always, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public who will wish to comment, please?
Hi, my name is Lucy Pacific, I signed in outside. I'm a homeowner at 124 West 67th Street, which is right across the street from what the Westmont Village Apartments. My driveway, when I exit out my driveway, I'm right across the street from another driveway coming out of the apartment building. The amount of traffic is, is great. I'm concerned about where the clubhouse facilities are going to be constructed, if that's going to be directly south of my driveway. Do you know on this plat here where? So that's a concern that I have of where the traffic is going to travel in and out of the new clubhouse, fitness center, and everything else. I have a feeling it's right adjacent with our driveways. So is there a possibility of routing the traffic perhaps in, a one-way into one side of that parking lot and a one-way out of that parking lot? Is a concern. There was something else I wanted to bring up, and now I can't remember what it was. That's it for right now. So that's one of the concerns I have. They have done a fabulous job of cleaning up the landscaping, the tenants themselves, the lack of police activity in the area has greatly reduced, so they've done a fabulous job since January, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
So I'm going to, I'm going to try one more time here with the, with the plans to orient us. I'm trying. All right, so if, if we're looking at the site, the, the top of the plan here is north, Cass, Cass Avenue off to our right, and 67th Street along the top of the plan. The, I believe the, the entrance you're talking about is right here, which is Apple Grove Lane, which, which tees into the, which tees into the site.
Go to your right is where our driveways are, that intersect with the driveways in between those six buildings.
Okay, so that, yeah, there's a, there's a driveway entrance right, right here. Okay, so there, yeah, there's a, there's a driveway entrance right, right here. So we're, we're proposing the clubhouse here. The clubhouse would be built immediately adjacent to an existing parking lot. So there, there's some, there's some existing structures there now and the structures are being repurposed. That existing parking lot is being renovated, there's, it's, it was poorly built. It's not rectangular or square, it's kind of off kilter. So there's some, it will be resurfaced, it will be slightly expanded and it will, it will front the, the clubhouse that would be constructed here. There's one, one entrance and exit out of the clubhouse, which is the existing entrance and exit out of that parking lot. We don't anticipate that the, the clubhouse is an independent traffic generator, there wouldn't be memberships being sold to any third parties. The users of the clubhouse would be residents of the facility. The, the entire facility is interconnected with a walkway system, so if someone is coming to the clubhouse to work out or go to the pool, I think we would hope that they would walk as opposed to driving over to the clubhouse.
I'd like to have a plan, but.
But, and it, but the other issue is that there's a, there are a limited number of parking spaces fronting the clubhouse. It's sufficient to address what's going on in the clubhouse, we believe. There are additional, there's significant parking to the east and there's significant parking to the west. We don't think there's a need for additional parking. Our intent is not to take up additional green space. As Joe talked about, we have a deficiency in open space today. It's not our, we, we want to add a building that is useful for residents, a building that's useful for residents year-round. We know unfortunately here in Chicago, we get outside a limited number of days of a year. So we've got a pool that's going to address resident needs during the summer, we've got a clubhouse facility that's going to be very nice and is going to address resident recreational needs in the, in the winter. In many communities, that clubhouse facility would count as open space because it is serving a recreational purpose. Here, that's not the case, that's fine, it just drives the need for additional relief from the open space requirement. But whatever the case, our intent is to utilize the existing parking lot, again, making minor changes to it, but we don't believe that there would be any significant traffic flow coming in and out of that, that facility. We expect traffic at the clubhouse to be relatively low after, you know, in, in the evening hours, we would expect that some residents would be in and out of the clubhouse. Ideally, the clubhouse will act as a gathering place. There's nothing on the campus now to encourage any sense of community for the apartment complex, so the intent is there's a sort of great room gathering space that residents could congregate, they could have a conversation, they could enjoy a cup of coffee or whatever it might be, whether it's going to the pool or picking up packages or whatnot. So we're, we're excited about the opportunity, we think we have done a lot to clean up the community. It's, it's only been a couple of months since we've really taken over control and we think there's lots more good to come as a result of the changes that we continue to make in the campus. If there's additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, it, maybe it's easiest to defer until two weeks from now and we'll, I'll cross our fingers for a PowerPoint.
Okay, we'll go to the, back to the public, we're still in a public comment. Anybody else from the public who wishes to speak on this? Ladies?
Yeah, real quick.
Did you sign in?
I signed in.
Your name, please.
My name is Karen Vetrowick and I live at 126 67th Street next to Lucy, been there 20 years. And I've seen the very beginning before when it was quite like it is now and I've seen the opposite and I've seen the way it is now, so I've seen, my husband and I have seen everything and we're very excited. We've seen quite a transformation and we're very, very happy, happy. I, I've never thought I'd come to see this day and I almost thought we were gonna have to move. And my only hope is that when you're talking about the property, dividing it into two lots, that it will be managed exactly the same as the two properties of the both lots, that you will be managing it not, you know, separately, that they will be managed identically, you know, because we saw this property at the ponds managed separately. And so that's what we're hoping, that when you do say they will be managed the same, the same rules and enforced, that, you know, that is what you mean and that one is not going to be sold out and the other one, you know what I'm saying? That we, we really, you know, are holding you by that, okay? That's what I have a quick, my, that was my question. Thank you.
The, the present intent of ownership today is to maintain ownership of both properties and to, and to operate them as a unified campus. That's why we're coming forward with a proposal for one clubhouse today. We do, we recognize that there are market realities, that properties get bought and sold. That is, that is part of the world we live in and we are positioning the campus so that it can be sold in the future. Now, I, I think the important element here is that we're taking the property from 93 ownership units in which every building operated under a different set of rules to two ownership units, where 288 units would operate and 270 units would operate. So it's not the sort of Wild West of operations that existed a year ago, that would be professional management. Whether we sold one or both properties, this is, this, this would be a, a, a sale in the tens of millions of dollars. It's not a sale of, it's not a sale to a single individual, it's a sale that's going to go to an institutional investor and we know that institutional investors have a long, there's certainly bad institutional investors, I guess I shouldn't suggest that there's not, but by and large, institutional investors have a long history of hiring professional management companies, of reinvesting dollars in the campus because they're in it for the long-term and there's a significant investment that they're protecting. It's not a $200,000 or $300,000 investment and it's not the only property that they own or manage.
Any further public comment whatsoever? Okay, we're gonna close the public comment. Let's start with Commissioner Bartlett.
I really don't have any questions. My only comment is I'm delighted with this project and I think it's enhancing the village, it is, it's making it easier on the residents who live near the, the old ponds or the new Village Apartments and I, I couldn't be more pleased, so thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I would second all of that. It's an amazing feat to go from that many ownerships down to one. That's incredible and it is certainly a boon to that whole campus. And it's exciting to think about the possibilities that that generates, so I'm completely for it.
Commissioner Thomas?
I think it's amazing that when you first looked at this property in order to buy it and you saw the condition and the amount of owners and you stuck to it, thank you. And I support your efforts.
Commissioner Pill?
Yeah, I, I've taken several rides down there and I appreciate the efforts that have gone into this. And in keeping with our comprehensive plan, while we're not actually reducing the number of apartment units, we are improving the quality of them and that goes hand in hand. If you can't reduce, at least you could go ahead and make them better and more livable and I certainly appreciate the, the lessening of the drain on our police resources, so thank you for that.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I would just ask staff how things are going with the other project, if, are they pretty much doing what they said they would do and, and the one on Eagle?
Eagle Creek.
Oh, Eagle Creek. Right. Yeah, they're moving forward with that as well.
Because that's great, is if you, they stick to everything they say they're gonna do, because anything that would be done would be an improvement, but it'd be nice if it were done right.
I, I'd like to echo that as well. The property management has taken several of the staff on tours of the buildings to show, you know, what the improvements are and, you know, have pulled the appropriate permits and have decreased the crime substantially and cleaned up the trash and so I feel like we're making substantial improvements and we're very happy with the progress.
Great. Commissioner Carmichael?
Yeah, long overdue and we thank you, it's a great start.
Thank you.
Yeah, one I drove through the, yesterday, it, I like your, what you're doing at the, the garbage pickups, stuff that you pay your work, the roofs, everything. I lived next to that pile of junk for 37 years, so it's, I'm very happy to see you come in.
Thank you for your time tonight.
I do have a couple of questions. What are your, when you do get your clubhouse built, what are your, gonna be your hours of use? I think Eagle Creek, you are originally considered going 24 hours.
Yeah, it's, so it will operate on a similar system where that there would be a, a resident key fob access. So different sections of the clubhouse would be accessible by different people with the key fob. So for example, obviously, we're not letting residents into a leasing office, so their key fob doesn't work there.
But they will have 24-hour access?
They, they will not have 24-hour access. That, those, those details are still in the planning process, but by and large, everything will be open when the leasing office is open. And the leasing office will generally be open 8:30 to 6:00, Monday through Saturday and from noon to 5:00 on Sunday.
Okay.
The pool will be open Memorial Day to Labor Day from 10:00 AM to dusk and then the business center hours will vary in between there depending on staffing.
When I spoke with you at the economic.
And yes, and the, the exercise room will be accessible, that, that's one that's not defined yet, but there would be, we, we have the ability to allow access to the exercise room 24 hours. I, I think the, the tendency is to allow the early hours, but maybe not so much of the really late hours when you could get in, when somebody else could get in more trouble. So we, we recognize the intent or the, the desire to retain control of it, we're making a significant investment in the property and, and we will put appropriate standards in place.
When you presented before the Economic Development Committee, I asked you about the storm drain over by Vale Drive.
Yep.
And you alluded to as how it goes into the pond, the pond does not flow downhill, it just backs up.
Yeah, and there's, that, that's part of overall improvement plan, so all of the, all of the storm water is sort of being evaluated and it looks like Norrie wants to jump on that one.
And corrected, I hope.
I, at this point, we believe that they have corrected the situation. They've rotted out some of the storm sewers in between the ponds and it looks like there is no more standing water along 67th Street.
I'll call you next time it rains.
That, that might be later this evening.
Then I did have one question now, you're gonna build a clubhouse with the second one in the future, once you subdivide, correct?
The, well, the.
Right, you, now you're playing, when you come back.
They're subdividing right now.
Well, they're gonna come back for a subdivision.
We would be, the, the intent is to subdivide presently, so the, I mean, the only way to consolidate all of the property is to, is apply a subdivision.
I understand, makes sense.
So we're, so we're taking, instead of taking it all down to one lot, we're taking all of the ownership units down to two lots. So as part of the request to build the clubhouse, we're subdividing the property into two lots. As part of the plan development that's being overlaid on the property, we're looking for site plan approval to build two clubhouses. The clubhouse along 67th Street would be built immediately, in fact, we're, we're talking about submitting building plans, if not this week, next week, so that we're able to pull a permit a little bit later this fall in the September timeframe, I think we're talking about. The future clubhouse, it needs zoning relief and we'd like to get that zoning relief now since we're before you. There is no intent to build that clubhouse right now. If we were to sell off lot two, there is the ability to build that clubhouse if there was not an agreement where there could be shared use of a clubhouse. So we're looking right now to build, to create maximum flexibility from a zoning standpoint, maximum certainty and maximum flexibility, so that we know we've got one clubhouse, we've got the ability to do another clubhouse if we determine it's needed as part of some future sale of the property.
I understand that, but now you're gonna be subdividing into two parcels, you're gonna build a clubhouse for parcel one.
Correct.
The clubhouse is gonna be sized to handle parcel one and parcel two.
Correct, we believe that, we believe that the clubhouse can accommodate all 588 units, that's correct.
Okay, for like the Amazon pickups where they're all gonna have their specials, so if you were to build a second clubhouse, is the first one gonna be overbuilt?
It, it may, it may be, but that, I, I mean, I think we need to build for the reality that we know today and there's not funds and resources available to build two clubhouses, so we want to know, we want to be able to serve the residents of the community today and that dictates building a certain sized clubhouse. In the future, the clubhouse may ultimately be smaller, what we're showing is something that generally mirrors the size of the clubhouse we're building today because it's easy to sort of pick that clubhouse up and flip it over in another location to secure the approvals for that. So would we have two clubhouses that are, that are larger than they need to be? We may, but at the end of the day, I don't think that's, I, I don't think that's a real practical problem. I, I think that's just something that accrues to the benefit of the residents of the community if there's more space available.
A question. If you were to create a third lot, third lot, lot number three being the property that the clubhouses would sit on with dual ownership, lot one and lot two owning the clubhouse, you could build your one clubhouse which would serve all your function in a few, a thought?
And.
I don't know if it's practical or not, but.
We, we went through many machinations in order to end up where we did and at the end of the day, we, we have no present plans to sell the property. I feel like I need to keep saying that because we're subdividing the property and planning for the future. There is no present plan to sell, but we have, it's impossible for us to predict what a future buyer is going to dictate. That future buyer may well strike an agreement with us where one, where one property owns the clubhouse and there's a, there's a declaration, there's a covenant which restricts and allows the other property to use the clubhouse. It, it's just impossible to really plan for that right now. I think the best planning we can do is secure the right for the second clubhouse and if we reach an agreement such that we have shared use of one clubhouse, then so be it. If a second clubhouse gets, gets built, it's certainly not something that's a negative for the community.
Well, I can only applaud everything you've done so far, I think you've done a marvelous job.
Thank you.
And I can't wait to see you back in here again.
Sounds good. Thank you for your time this evening.
Kevin? Do continue. Shall we vote the course?
Yeah, just, you're just closing the public hearing and it'll be re-noticed.
Well, public hearing is closed.
Right. When are you coming back, Russ?
You should let the public know that we'll be back August 3rd.
Okay, I'm told that the petitioner will republish and he will be back at our August three, 3rd meeting, which will also be a special meeting where we're gonna have the whole panel also at the same time.
Charlie?
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, do we have to take any action, Kevin, whatsoever?
Not on their petition.
Okay, fine.
Under Old Business Planning and Zoning Item 16013, Westmont B Imports regarding the property located at 420 and 430 East Ogden Avenue, a portion of Westmont Drive, 65, 645, 650 and 651 Westmont Drive and 415 Plaza Drive for the following. Item A, Special Use Permit Request to Operate an Automobile Dealership in the B2 General Business District. Item B, Zoning Code Variance Request to Allow Parking Within the Front Yard Setback. Item C, Zoning Code Variance Request to Increase the Allowed Height in the B2 General Business District for the Purpose of Constructing a Rooftop Parking Deck for an Automobile Dealership. Item D, Preliminary Plan of Vacation for Westmont Drive. Item E, Preliminary Plan of Consolidation. Item F, Site and Landscaping Plan Approval.
Good evening, sir. Would you want to recess for a few minutes or?
I, um, I think we're waiting.
Oh, there you go, got the thumbs up.
We've got a thumbs up, so.
Wow, look at this.
My name is Tom McCabe. I'm the civil engineer for this, the BMW project. I'm with Spaceco Incorporated. Tonight, we have a couple of presentations. We have Pat Womack, who's the general manager at BMW, is actually in Germany on BMW business, but he did have a tape, about a three-minute tape he, he had, and so we're going to look at that. I'm the civil engineer. We have Peter Newfeld with BSM Design, he's the architect. We have Craig Dowden with James Dowden Associates, our landscape architect, and then we have Michael Worthman with KLOA, who's our traffic consultant. So tonight, we're going to put together, um, let's, let me just go one quick. Let's put Pat, we'll put the video on. Anyways, we're here with, for the BMW project. We've got our site plan up here on the left side of the drawing is going to be, is what we're proposing as a new facility. The existing facility is actually on the right side where the parking lot's going to be. We're envisioning two acreade detention ponds on the property, and then in the back, we would vacate, we would vacate Westmont Drive about two-thirds of the way back, put a cul-de-sac in the back that meets all the requirements of the village. We worked that out with Noriel recently, and, um, again, it'd be a brand-new facility. Timing-wise, we would hope to get going this fall. As you know, there's, we purchased the existing tennis center, we've purchased a couple of buildings in the back. Our goal is to keep the tennis center up to store cars over the winter for practical reasons. We would, we'd start working on the site on, on the left-hand side of the west side of the property, get rid of the building in the front, the old Baker Square, which is the pre-driven cars now, and then work on doing all the utility relocations, and then in the spring demolish the tennis center, and then get started on the building. And then keep the existing building in operation, and then probably the next, we're anticipating probably that whole season of next year, of two thousand seventeen, to build a new building, and then two thousand eighteen in the spring demolish the old building, and then build a parking lot and the detention pond on the east side. So what we'll do is I'll, we'll put this video on with Pat, I'll have the architect come in, or come up and go over his portion of it, then I'll talk about the engineering portion of it. We'll have the landscape architect talk about what we're trying to do with some of the new ordinances. As you know, trees and cars don't get along, but we'll, we're going to try as best we can. And then probably the, the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room is the traffic engineer, and he'll, he'll be last to discuss our proposal of, of closing down Westmont Drive and making a cul-de-sac in the back.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm sorry that I can't attend this meeting. We were set up for June, and unfortunately, I have a BMW meeting that I'm attending right now in Munich and can't be a part of the July meeting, so I wanted to at least spend a couple moments to thank you for your time and listening to our proposition of what we're trying to accomplish here at the old BMW Westmont. I started here in two thousand two, and at that point in time, we had five models and a couple different versions of each model, with a total of a couple hundred new cars in stock at the most at any point in time. Fast forward to two thousand fifteen, we ended the year with over four hundred new cars on the ground, one hundred and fifty used cars on the ground, and servicing between seventy to ninety service customers a day. So as you can imagine, this place has grown extensively with the support of the town, obviously, and the way we do business. We are now officially the number-one BMW store in the central region, which is pretty much all of the Midwest, and we're in a small antiquated facility that we need to expand on. As you all know, we've purchased the Baker, old Baker Square building, which is where we're sitting right now. We've just purchased the tennis center that is directly behind us about a year ago, and are proposing that we purchase part of Westmont Drive. This is key to our growth, as every square foot in Westmont and where we're located is key to our business. We've outgrown significantly where we're at, and we do not want to move elsewhere. We want to stay in Westmont, the, the town and the mayor and people have supported us. We've had a great relationship, and we want to continue that relationship. I myself have been part of the chamber, many city meetings, and areas that we can try to help work together and help put together the Westmont Auto Mile. And as you know, we've supported the Fourth of July fireworks, parades, so on and so forth, so the town has been able to still manage through some of these tougher times recently with the support of the Westmont Auto Mile. So we've done our part. I feel that this is something that, that needs to happen for us to stay here and for our growth. I wanted just to explain how it benefits the city. As we move forward, obviously, we'll be looking to hire more individuals. When I first started here, we were sixty employees, maybe seventy employees, and now we're at a hundred and twenty, and once we finish our project, we're going to need another twenty or thirty local people to hire. So it's, it's very key to the growth of the city of Westmont. I know it helps keep taxes lower. Also, we're going to get rid of Baker Square. Finally, I guess we should discuss that. So the whole frontage of Ogden Avenue will change. I think it will increase some of the values of the properties around us based on what we're looking at, and overall, it helps us stay here and keeps, keeps us in business in Westmont, which is where we want to stay. So I, I thank you for your time. I greatly apologize for not being able to be here in person as I'm, again, in Munich during a meeting that I can't get out of. And Tom McCabe will continue on after this and explain the basics of the project, but again, I wanted to say I apologize for not being here, and thank you for your time, and appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you, and we'll move on to Peter Newfeld, who's our architect, and he'll go over the building. Sean, how do I advance?
Just the arrows, but when you hit the next one, if it doesn't look right away, just be important.
Okay. The site plan that you see in front of you is the proposed plan. The existing building is basically to the right of that. I've got a, kind of a makeshift pointer here. Oh, it's not working on the screen. All right, so the existing building is, is to the right of the, of the gray area, the light gray area. The Baker Square building would be in front of that light gray area, and there's a regional office building that AutoNation owns that's where that upper pond is. So the new building is roughly a sixty-thousand-square-foot footprint that is a little bit larger than the existing footprint, but not much. The planning behind it is just to increase efficiencies with the building and to try and get the adequate parking that this facility will need in, actually in the year two thousand twenty-one. BMW has, as you heard Pat say, they've increased their sales dramatically since he's been there in two thousand two, and BMW, based on unit sales and zip codes and, and all of their business models, is forecasting a much more dramatic increase with all the different models that they're bringing. So they want a larger facility, they, they, I've done a number of, I've known Pat since two thousand two, I've done a number of schematic plans with him. I remember the facility before the service drive was there, for instance, before the exterior was enclosed, and we could see no other way to expand the existing footprint and keep any kind of efficiencies for him, for his internal operations. How do I, go to the next one, Sean? So I thought I'd talk a little bit about the architecture. This is one of the front views. What we try and do as a firm, we work with AutoNation all over the country, and we try and take a manufacturer's architectural requirements, and they all have them these days. We try and take the owner's requests or requirements for a good functioning facility, and being architects, we try and produce good architecture that the public would benefit from. So when we try and meld those three together, this is going to be one of our solutions to that. We've done a number of different schematic plans, but this, we hope meets all, we know meets all the BMW corporate requirements, and we hope to, that it's an attractive facility for the public, because you can see a lot of glass across the front and lots of thin architectural planes. It's supposed to be a much more modern-looking facility. So this is another close-up view of the front from the other side. There'll be a tower element on that right side, and the showroom is, is basically on the left, and service is kind of in the rear. This is just a view, an aerial view. There'll be a four-lane service drive on the right side there where that red car is, and then you can see the parking decks to help, you know, get enough parking inventory on-site that the sales will require for the, for the BMW facility. There's basically three levels of parking there. There's parking on the roof of the service shop, and then two, you know, deck levels. It'd be similar to the facility up the street, the Mercedes-Benz store, or the parking deck that is being built for Audi. That's another view of the parking deck, just from the ground level, and a third view of the, of the deck and the entrance. We're dealing with the site by the slope of the site, so that, that whole parking deck structure sits, sits down, kind of down the hill. The hill, the site, as you know, slopes from Ogden towards the rear. And that's about it that I've got for architecture. Is there, are there any architectural questions? And I may have to ask Tom to jump in.
I would. I have a question.
Okay, as Peter mentioned, and I think as we had an earlier applicant tonight, we've also worked on the Audi garage, we've worked on the Mercedes garage, so I think we all know there's, there's a, there's a big need right now for parking for the automobile facilities, and the other big element is the service. As, as Pat mentioned, he's got quite a bit more service to do, so we've got a, a new service area. The service area that's out there now is, is pretty old, so part of this process is getting the new four service bays, so we can get people in and out of there efficiently. From a, the engineering standpoint, utilities now run up and down Westmont Drive, we'll reroute those. I think the, the biggest improvement here that you're going to see is that the corner of Plaza Drive and Westmont Drive during rains floods significantly, and that's, we've heard that for a long time. There's really no detention out here to speak of. The tennis center has two maybe forty-eight-inch pipes, and then there's some kind of makeshift detention right now in front of the existing BMW building. So if nothing else, this is going to dramatically increase. I think we're at four-acre-feet of detention we're providing, where right now, there's none. That whole site is, I think you all know, and Peter alluded to, it drops hard from Ogden Avenue back to Plaza, and our building is going to be steps, the showroom's up higher, where the service and the garage is, is actually about four or five feet lower than the front, so we're following, we're following the grade going down. The entrance is out in front, we've got three. There's one to our east side that, when the original owner of this property sold the piece to the east, to McGrath, there's an easement along that property. McGrath uses now to get back to their, to the rear of their property. That's going to remain intact. The easement in the back that runs east and west, that services the back half of McGrath, and I think it also does the, the property to the north of us, so that'll remain intact. So the easements are all staying. We've got a, a Village standard cul-de-sac back there. It'll have sidewalk, it'll have parkway, it'll have trees, and then from there, our drive will come back. It'll split between our property, and it'll split going east to the, to the easement to get over to McGrath's property. So from an engineering standpoint, again, timing-wise, we talked about that, it's, like I said, you're going to see a significant improvement of nothing else but the storm sewer. So moving on. Next up will be Craig Dowden with Dowden Associates. He's our landscape architect.
Hi, good evening. As Tom indicated, my name is Craig Dowden. I'm with James Dowden and Associates. We are landscape architects and planners in Libertyville, celebrating our seventy-fifth year in business this year, and sometimes it feels like I had all seventy-five years this year as busy as life has been, so. But anyway, this evening, I would like to talk a little bit about the landscape that's being proposed around this facility. It's kind of a nice facility, interesting from a landscape perspective, because as Tom indicated, cars and plants don't mix. There's just, the, the mess that they can cause, it can just be kind of an auto dealership's nightmare. So, but being as Westmont has some landscape restrictions or ordinances that we wanted to make sure that we adhered to, the landscape plan that we have developed has a combination of shade trees, flowering ornamentals, and evergreens, a nice balance. I think the Village had required that we look to about do a third of each, which we've been able to do with the site landscape plan that we have now. There were also requirements for, I think it was about seven hundred and forty shrubs being installed throughout the site, which was a little challenging at the beginning until I kind of played with the site plan a little bit and massaged some of the, the areas and was able to establish some nice shrub beds, but there's a great, I think we have a nice representation of color. There's some hydrangea in there that are going to be flowering from about Fourth of July on. There's some lilacs that will be flowering earlier in the year. There's some spiree that will also be flowering a little bit earlier in the year. They're all very hardy plants to this area. They'll all take salt, so anything, any snow removal that's going to be done on the site, which I'm sure will be very thorough, the plantings that have been selected for this site will withstand that salt. So whether it's the ornamentals, even the evergreens, we look to use bald cypress, which will take a little bit more salt than, than other evergreens would, we think we have that taken care of as well. So in short, I think we've developed a nice colorful landscape plan that has some nice seasonality to it, and will be a nice reflection on the site. And after everybody's done making their presentation, if anyone has any landscape questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
My name's Michael Worthman. I'm a principal with the firm of Kenning Glingren, O'Hara Boone Inc., KLOA Inc., and we were retained to, let me keep the site plan up for now, perform the traffic study for. for the proposed expansion of the dealership and the vacation of Westmont Drive. We conducted a comprehensive study where we evaluated the weekday morning, weekday evening, and Saturday midday peak periods. We looked at the existing traffic volumes, the reassignment of volumes, additional growth in the area, as well as the traffic that will be generated by the expansion of the dealership. So we looked at a number of increases in traffic in the area. Quickly, as you've heard, as part of the dealership, the southern two-thirds portion of Westmont Drive will be vacated. At the north end, Westmont Drive will now terminate as a cul-de-sac, and as you've heard, it's been designed to meet all of the village's requirement. At the south end, I think I can use the mouse. There you go. This existing curb cut, which is Westmont Drive, will now become a private access drive serving the expanded dealership. It will serve as the main access drive. In addition, you have two other access drives on Ogden Avenue, as well as an access drive off of the cul-de-sac. So with the elimination or vacation of Westmont Drive, currently, Westmont Drive serves the existing dealership, as well as several uses along Westmont Drive, and, lost the mouse. The uses of the properties along Plaza Drive, mainly east of Blackhawk Drive. So I guess if I walk here, it's pretty much serving the dealership, a couple properties here, and then all of the properties along Plaza Drive. With the vacation, Blackhawk Drive, let me close this. Whoops. What did I do? Sorry about this. No, leave it. Blackhawk Drive will now become the alternative route for Westmont Drive that will be vacated. So anyone coming from the east, from the west, or from the south on Blackhawk, will now come up Blackhawk Drive, down Plaza Drive, to access the various properties. This will result in a minimal increase in traffic. Instead of traveling down, coming up Westmont Drive, they will just make the left here now, come up and go to the property. Similarly, when they're leaving, if they were coming down to make a right, they will just come down Plaza, make the left, and then make the right. So the traffic traveling from the west and from the south on Blackhawk Drive is really minimal impact or limited impact in additional travel or additional travel time. That traffic that's traveling from the east on Ogden Avenue will now have to travel past Westmont Drive, about a quarter of a mile, come up Blackhawk Drive, and travel back down Plaza Drive to their property. As I said, this is about an additional quarter mile, and then if they're coming to the end of Plaza Drive, that's about another quarter mile. So those people coming from the east will have some impact. They'll have to travel about a half a mile to a quarter a mile of additional travel. You know, if you look at it, depending if you hit the lights or not, you're looking at maybe a couple minutes, four or five minutes of additional travel for those people coming from the east on Ogden Avenue. When you look at the volume of traffic that's currently using Westmont Drive to access those properties along Plaza Drive, the volume of traffic is not significant. In the morning peak hour, we're looking at impacting maybe approximately 88 vehicles in a one-hour period. However, in the PM peak, we're down to about 33 vehicles. And on a Saturday midday peak hour, you're looking at about an impact to about 20 vehicles. And the main difference between the morning and the afternoon peak period is the fact in the morning, most people are driving up to Plaza Drive, so they're making the right turn. However, in the afternoon, when they're leaving, you need to make the left onto Ogden Avenue. And as we all know, that's very difficult. And what we're finding is many of the people are coming down and making the left at the signal at Blackhawk Drive. So our impact on that PM is much less, because they're already making that maneuver in the PM peak period. So once again, minimal impacts for those that are traveling from the west and from the south on Blackhawk Drive. We will be impacting those from the east on Ogden. However, like I said, that's about anywhere from a quarter mile to a half a mile additional travel. It really impacts that morning when they're making the right in. In the afternoon, it's not as bad, because most of them are coming down the Blackhawk So we looked at what the impact would be on the roadway system. We took the existing volumes, reassigned those volumes that were using Westmont Drive, increased the traffic for background growth, and then added the traffic that would be generated by the expanded dealership. And what we found out is that the roadway system has sufficient capacity to accommodate these projected volumes, both the traffic that will be generated by the dealership, as well as the reassignment of the traffic. As we know, once again, I keep on moving, Blackhawk Drive is under traffic signal control. It operates at a very good level of service. The additional traffic from the reassignment of the Westmont Drive traffic only represents a 1% to 3% increase in traffic at this intersection. So it will continue to operate at a very good level of service. Blackhawk with Plaza is under always stop. That operates at a very good level of service A or B, and is projected to continue to operate at a good level of service B. So with the reassignment, there is sufficient capacity on the roadway system to accommodate the reassignment of the traffic, as well as the growth in the area and the traffic that will be generated by the expansion of the dealership. And I will be here to answer any questions that you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I think that's, I think just in conclusion here, a couple of things. We look at, and we met with, with the neighbors, we had a lunch one day over at the BMW dealership, and a lot of issues came up, and they said, you know, why, why don't we leave the road? And if you look at a 66-foot road, you had 10 feet or so, 10 or 12 feet on each side, you're about 86 feet wide, that we would be losing times the number of aisles that we have going back would be probably a couple hundred cars. Right now, we're looking at, our proposed building right now is about 700 cars. And the other two items on there with the height variation, we're getting 100 cars a level. So if we didn't get the height variation, we'd lose another 100 cars. And then if we didn't have, in the front with the setback, other than looking odd because everybody else is there on both sides of the street, we'd probably lose another 20 or 30 cars. So we're looking at between the roadway, the, a level of parking deck, and then the cars up in the front out of the 700 cars, that accounts for about 200 of them. So if you see if we went from 700 to 500, it's, it doesn't work, because if, if, if Pat had another five minutes, he'd tell you he would like to see 700 cars not be enough. So then it may be there someday. But for right now, we're trying to get, trying to get as many cars as we can in there between service and inventory. And again, keep the existing facility open, get a new state-of-the-art facility that meets BMW's requirements and AutoNation's requirements, and takes care of all the, the projected increase in service. The 2020 figures, he was looking at, I think about $150 million in sales for a year. So that's with the facility that we'll have built in the next couple of years. And we all know what that does to everybody around. So we'll open it up. We'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What you have before you is PZ's 16-013. And as has been well discussed already, first is a special use permit request to operate an automotive dealership in the B2 general business district. While they do have dealerships on multiple properties that have received special uses, the reconfiguration requires that a new special use be done to the new configured lot. The special use standard that does need to be met is the screening of cars awaiting service. In their explanation, they've, they've said that the landscape is screening, and they do have plans of moving the cars around and not necessarily keeping them in the public view. There is a zoning code variance request to allow parking the front yard setback, just as one of our earlier cases tonight. The request here is just for about seven feet into the front yard setback. Front yard setback on Ogden Avenue is 30 feet. So they're, they're requesting right about 23 feet. To build the, the structure, which with the additional parking decks, it does require a variance of about five feet. It's five feet beyond what we would permit. There would be, there is a request for a preliminary plot of vacation for Westmont Drive, which is integral to the project as, as they've shown. Also with that is the, the plot of consolidation. There are currently five lots. It's affecting four buildings. They're demolishing everything except for an existing building at 416 Plaza. They've indicated to us that the offices that are currently at 651 Westmont Drive would move into that building. So they're preserving that building and demolishing everything else. And then, of course, there's the, the site and landscaping approval for the entire project. And as always, we're available for questions.
Thank you. Okay. We'll open up public comment. Anybody who wishes to speak? Hello, Ellen.
Hello, Chairman. Long time no see.
I've been here.
My name is Ellen Emery. I'm a Westmont resident, but I'm here in my capacity. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Ansel Glencamp in Chicago, and our firm represents a number of the business owners who are located on Plaza Drive behind the proposed BMW expansion and the current BMW dealership. Without meaning to offend Commissioner Pill, was it your tennis center they bought? Are you recusing yourself from this item?
I am not.
I have a number of concerns, and I'm, my first, I'm disappointed that the general manager from the BMW dealership couldn't be here, because a lot of the questions that the, that the businesses on Plaza Drive are directed at the BMW, you know, someone who has the capacity to answer for the dealership. And although I respect everybody that's been hired as a, on a contractor basis, I don't know that they have the ability to answer a lot of the questions. We had FOIA'd the plans, and we were, we were denied access to the plans under the copyright exemption, which BMW could waive and allow the public and the business owners to see the plans. And we were told by the village that the new, there's a new cul-de-sac configuration, which we haven't been able to see. I think we're all justifiably concerned, you know, what's the secret? Why can't we see the plans so we can move things along and address any concerns, get answers to questions? So right now, we're flying blind with not having been able to get a copy of the plans. So I would ask the BMW dealership to waive the copyright exemption. Every, every set of plans that's drawn up by an architect is copyrighted. In this case, they're not turned over, and I would have asked him, you know, can, can we get a copy so that we can, can see and evaluate them? So, you know, we're flying blind here, and I, I think that that's inappropriate for the commission to be able to analyze things and have the public be able to ask the questions it needs to ask, and, like I say, move things along. One of the questions that we have is what's the purpose of the cul-de-sac? We were just told this is a new, a new configuration. Obviously, you need to turn around in a cul-de-sac. It's not a one-way, and we hear tonight that its access then goes to, it's an access for the cars for the BMW dealership, and an access over to McGrath through the cul-de-sac, not to the public. So what's the increased traffic on Plaza Drive? I've spent a lot of time over on Plaza Drive at all kinds of hours of the day. I've worked a lot with KLOA in the past, and they do good work. But in, in this instance, did they study what actually goes on on Blackhawk, which would take all of the traffic down? And just saying, well, you know, it's a good light. It isn't. When you go back and you study what's going on back on Plaza Drive, if you close Westmont Drive and the ability to use that, there are several things, and there are a number of things that will be addressed with the village board. And I mean that, it's no offense to you, but it's things like staging areas for the biggest threat assessment Westmont has, which is Ty Warner Park. The ability of surrounding neighborhoods to assist in the event there's ever something there, what closing Westmont Drive would mean to that. That'll be addressed when this all goes to the village board, along with fire safety issues. Furthest along Plaza Drive and right next to, I mean, spitting distance to the Citadel Townhomes is Westmont Auto Works, where they're, and it's huge, and they do a lot of work there. And they're good guys, they've been there a long time. They have a lot of hazardous materials in there. They have a lot of canisters in there with various gases. And if there's ever an explosion there, I talked to Fire Chief Weiss, and he said, well, we would have to come up and we'd have to go CAS to Plaza and all the way over on Plaza, and we wouldn't have the, it would be faster to do that than try to get up Blackhawk in case we catch that light and we have to, you know, get through that intersection. And if there's any semis, I asked him, I said, there's all kinds of loading docks right on Plaza, and Plaza, you know, with the parking, Plaza's narrow. All these businesses back there, these buildings have loading docks. Semis have to jockey to load and unload. You've all seen them, hear backup beepers, and they're trying in a narrow situation to get into the loading docks. What does the fire department do if there's a semi across Plaza Drive, there's no access on Westmont for the extra quarter mile from Blackhawk? What do they do if there's a fire back there? I think taking Westmont Drive and closing it is doing a great disservice to a lot of people. When you look at what's back there, there's 350 parking spaces for the various businesses. Right now, the light at Blackhawk and Ogden is a mess. It is not adequate. You sit there, and you sit there, and you sit there if you need to make a left-hand turn. The time that it takes for those people to get out on Blackhawk to make a left turn now, and then they would have to use also Blackhawk to make a right turn if Westmont Drive access is denied, the cars will be lined up at that four-way stop. And so we tried it. With the timing of the lights and without BMW going to IDOT and talking about the timing of the light, or the village requiring that there be a discussion with IDOT about the timing of the light, the cars will be approximately 40 to 50 cars deep at rush hour. They can't even get to the stop sign to go right on Blackhawk and go up and cut through Oakwood and go out with the light at Oakwood to try to cut down on it. It will be a mess. Right now, they use it to get out right turn only. They know, and everybody knows it's dangerous to make a left turn there, so they use it for right turn. If you force the right turners into that backup of traffic, you're going to have a mess. Add a fire, add a heart attack at the, at the, at the Park District's fitness center, nobody can get to them. There's just too many businesses and too many people and too much activity that from when you walk back there and you go, you go, wow, this dealership is expanding and it's great, and it's great, and it's part of the Westmont Auto Mile, and, you know, you guys know me, did I vote for everything on that Westmont Auto Mile virtually when I was on the Village Board? But this one, there was a commissioner that said tonight, Mr. Van Buren said earlier, a business shouldn't be penalized for wanting to expand, but a bunch of businesses should not be penalized for wanting to stay in business. Now, BMW recognizes there's going to be a problem when they offer the Park District fifty thousand dollars for additional signage to tell people how to get to the Fitness Center. If you offer somebody fifty thousand dollars to help people find their way, what do you think that means for these businesses that are back on Plaza? The woman who has the, the Irish dance studio, she doesn't get any money. How does, you know, how do people find their way back there? They've acknowledged by offering that kind of money for signage that there's a problem for people to negotiate. So you have all these businesses back there, they're not going to be able, and the dance studio, she's even told us. If my people, my parents of my kids can't get in here to drop them off or pick them up and get back out within, say, twenty minutes or a half hour, I'm going to lose every student I have. Now, is that supporting Westmont businesses? I don't think so. When you go to Europe and you look at where the condensation of people who live in Europe, and you look at the car dealers in Europe, and you look at how they build their dealerships, they can't go like this and take roads. They go up, and they've got the coolest stuff where they put the glass elevators to show their models and glass, glass over, similar to a walkway. It's a glass driveway over a street. They are modern as all get out. Are they beautiful? Yes. Do they sell a lot of cars? You know they do. So we need you to pay attention to the businesses that are back behind Plaza Drive. Now, we don't know, we know that there's going to, where are the car carriers going to unload? Chief Weiss tells me, and Chief Mulhern tells me, that there's always a problem with them unloading on Ogden. Well, anybody can picture that and go, yeah, there's a problem. So now are they coming in and are they going to unload on Plaza after the traffic, after these people can't even get in or out? And now they're going to unload on Plaza? How do these people even get to their businesses? How do they go home? How do they make appointments? If, we all understand about revenue generation, okay? But to shut a bunch of businesses down or to put people's lives or their health safety at risk, to put two hundred more cars on a BMW lot, I know what I think about that, and I, and I just hope you pay attention to that. So if you, if you don't require I dot to get involved and to resync that light, and you have access from McGrath and BMW now on the, on the cul-de-sac, so now is Oakwood the new test drive circuit? Because they've got exclusive access. With this plan, they give themselves in and out, nobody else, and access to all their lots and all of that. What stops them from going, okay, you want to take it for a spin? You don't have to spend twenty minutes trying to get out onto Ogden. Let's just go the back way, and let's go through Oakwood. How does that make sense for the residences in Oakwood? It doesn't. Now, to say that they're going to hire another twenty or thirty employees, that's a good thing. But all of the people who will lose business back on Plaza Drive, it's going to be more than twenty or thirty employees. It's going to be a lot, and those, those buildings are going to be, you know, talk to the landlords. What are they worth when there's no access or there's twenty minutes to get either in or out of that property? And you can't rent them anymore. You've got all this vacant land sitting back there. We're going to have another Westmont crisis where all of these buildings, because of closing off access to three hundred and fifty-plus parking spaces, puts these people out of business. Is that right? I don't think so. The business owners are sure concerned about it. And I think that the, any voting on this should be deferred until we get some answers from BMW. If they say, no, we're going to pull, we're going to pull the car carriers in from Ogden, and they're not going to unload on Ogden anymore, which is giving fire and police fits, and they're going to unload in, they're not going to use Plaza Drive, and they're not going to use the cul-de-sac so that all the car carriers can line up on Plaza Drive, we get answers, and hopefully, we get answers that make sense to everybody. And so whatever's going to be done with this can move forward. They've spent a lot of money. They're going to spend a lot of money. But things have to be answered, and maybe there's some things that have to be compromised. So I'm going to ask you tonight to defer this until we get some answers from BMW, including an answer why we can't look at the plans. Because for transparency's sake, I don't think that's really appropriate. And also, I think I'll address it with you. The Village Board can only answer it, but, you know, the purchase price, when you're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars, why do you have, why are you giving a discount on the purchase price for Westmont Drive? And why is it over a number of years so that the taxpayers in Westmont get to shoulder that burden? That should be addressed. It's like if you're going to do this kind of thing and affect that many people, you do it by the book. You don't do favors, and you don't say, yeah, we want to sell a lot of cars. I know they sell a lot of cars. Guess where I bought mine? But this just isn't right. And then to say, oh, we're only going to buy a portion, or we're going to leave that stub out there, that stub becomes worthless. Then they go, three years from now, they go, oh, guess what? That part we didn't buy and that you can't use, and it's worthless to you, we want it because now we're going to do something else, you know, and connect the lot and, you know, the parking deck and expand back. And by the way, you know, what does the appraiser tell Westmont? It's worth now. It's not worth one point three or one point nine million. It's worth zero because nobody has access to it but a private developer who got it for dirt cheap. I don't think that's good business for the village. I don't think that's how you treat your taxpayers in the end by getting set up to get spanked. So that's all I have to say, other than I would certainly appreciate being able to talk to BMW and getting some answers.
Okay, then, Ellen, let me understand, Ms. Emery, that you wish to defer this to our next meeting?
Yes.
To a later date?
Yes.
That is your right.
And I don't know how long the GM is in Munich, but we, you know, he'll, we need to sit down with him, and we need to see if we can see the plans, if he can okay for Jill to let us see the plans, and I don't know if that will be by the April third. There was something about, I thought there was supposed to be an April tenth meeting. I may be wrong, but...
Ms. Emery, could you state that, who you represent for what party? Because, Kevin, I ask advice of our council. Does she have to represent a business, or can she just do it herself?
She really needs to be representing somebody who is affected by this, and that would be somebody close to the area.
Are you, could you state that then for us?
I will give you one of the business owners, but I, I do have the right to not give you all of the names of the business owners I represent, and I'm sure Kevin will tell you that.
Just one.
Oakwood Development at four fourteen Plaza Drive is one of them.
So noted. Thank you. All right, Kevin, how best to proceed?
It's up to the, to the commission. If they, if they choose to make a motion to continue the public hearing to a date in the future, you can do that. You can also request that the petitioner provide some of the things she's asked for. They can or they can't, that's, that's up to them. She can, they can work with staff to try to facilitate some of these, these questions. But as Ellen knows, she's also free to try to negotiate with them on her own in the interim to try and resolve some of their concerns.
Is one of the options that we can continue the public hearing and then still have a continuance after that? Because there might be other question. Wouldn't it be, make sense to get all the questions together in one pot rather than just one person?
There are other people that haven't spoken.
Oh, yeah. There's other people who haven't spoken here. I didn't know if you had to do it now, though. That's what I was asking.
I just want to understand what we can do. That's all. We're, I intend to go through all the public to get anybody's opinions.
Yeah, I was asking whether her request has to be taken now or never.
No, it could be taken at any point in time before you, you close this evening and address it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we're available for some of the answers to the questions, and Mr. McCabe is as well.
Okay, please, if, if any rebuttal, answer to questions, whatever.
I'd like to address the FOIA. Our standard practice is to not make copies of copyrighted material, so we always invite people in who would like to see the drawings, so they're welcome to see them during regular business hours of the Village Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the hangup is with having Pat here. I can answer all the questions right now without fear of, you know, breaking any rules. Plans, no problem. We actually sent them to a couple of the people when we had our luncheon. We sent them, we emailed them, we emailed the traffic reports, we emailed the plans. So we can certainly do that for you tomorrow. Okay, as far as the cul-de-sac access, cul-de-sac access, you said now it's down to two people. That's all there is now. The only two people that can get in there are us and McGrath, and that's our property, and there's an easement. So as far as making that somehow a private club is not correct. Our property line goes to the back of there, and there's an easement there for McGrath. So that's, that's that answer. As far as fire department access, if you look, there's a fire department lane that goes all the way back from the front to the back. We have fire truck access, the auto turn works, the fire trucks can get all the way up through our parking lot. It's very wide, out the back and out the cul-de-sac. So I'm sure if there's a problem back there, the fire trucks, they could go right through the middle of our property.
So, excuse me, you're saying there's not going to be a gate at that cul-de-sac?
Please.
No, 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 no.
If you want, you have to come up to the podium. Nobody else can hear you except us, and the home people need to hear you.
Typically, it'll be, it'll be gated at night, but typically, as most properties that have gates that the fire department has to get to, there's a knock box. There are some nowadays, you know, there's some, a card or something that they can get, open the gate and drive through. So that's not, that's not an issue. As far as I dot timing, we've talked about that since day one, and Michael and I have talked about talking to I dot. We've talked about that with the village. We're all on the same page. We want this thing to work, too. So we absolutely will go to I dot and get, and get that timing figured out. You talked about the cul-de-sac, why we have a cul-de-sac there, for a private cul-de-sac that's going to, it someday be worthless. That's a requirement between the village and ourselves, really with the village, because before that, if you drove down to the end, you've got a dead-end street. There's no cul-de-sac at the end, at the east end of Plaza right now. There's a hammerhead. This is, this is a full cul-de-sac so that anyone can drive down, turn around, a fire truck, a semi, anybody can come down there, turn around, and go back out. So this is, at no point is this ever going to be, it's, it's a safety issue on the village side, and at no point can I see the village giving up that cul-de-sac because that gets people to turn around down there. And then as far as car carriers unloading on Westmont, I don't see that happening, and, you know, we can certainly work out, we've worked it out, and we did Mercedes, I've done Audi, I've been there, you know, a long time, just going between the three properties. We can certainly work out a deal where either they pull in, if, if they don't come in the back, we'll pull them in the front, and they can unload on the property. This is a lot more property than we have right now, so operations-wise, we have more things, areas to do so they don't have to sit out on Ogden Avenue. So, and I apologize if there's other things. I was trying to write down as you were going. So, but I mean, as far as waiting for Pat to get back, I mean, that's, I don't think that's necessary, to be honest with you. But we're obviously at your, at your call.
Okay, thank you very much. Who else from the public? A gentleman, you?
My name's Scott Kraftheffer. I've already signed in.
Did I swear you in?
I swore in at the beginning of the meeting with everyone else.
Okay, thanks.
So I'm at four fourteen Plaza Drive, Suite 302. My business has been there for seven years. We actually bought that entire office complex, converted it to condominiums, so I've been selling those condominium units off over the years, and we just own a couple of them at this point. And I can tell you that by making Plaza Drive a dead-end street, it's not going to make it easier for me to sell those units. I'm going to have to decrease the prices on them. We're losing money on it. It's going to be very difficult to sell those on a dead-end street. We do have a traffic study. Mike, can you tell me how many truck docks are between four fourteen Plaza and Blackhawk that back out onto Plaza?
Seven. I don't have that number right.
Yeah, there's, there's eight of them. So when I'm pulling out of my parking lot and I'm heading towards Blackhawk, and there's a truck backing in with another truck queued up to back in, you'd be waiting there for seven or eight minutes, easily. So when I see that, now I just head over to, to Westmont Drive, go up to Ogden, take the right, no problem. Without that access, we're all held hostage there. If anything ever happens at the, the Fitness Center and they need paramedics there, same thing. You're not going to be able to get them there till the trucks are gone. At four thirty, when the factories let out, all the warehouse workers right there, that stop sign at Blackhawk is backed up by twenty-five cars. Same thing. If you, if you've got Westmont Drive you can turn onto, it's not an issue. But they're all going to that light at Blackhawk and Ogden, it's backed up, it's a disaster. So just keep that in mind when you're voting for this. If there's any way they can do another access on the east side of the property between the Lexus and the BMW dealership, that'd be fantastic. I don't think that's even been considered. You're making that a dead-end road, you're impacting the property values of all those businesses up there, and it's just a, it's going to be a disaster. Just keep it in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please, sir, if you will.
My name's Joel Hyman, representing the Park District. Superintendent of Revenue Facilities there, oversee operations of the Fitness Club at, excuse me, at our golf course. Prepared to read a letter from our Board of Directors, our Board of Commissioners, to the commission here. On behalf of the Westmont Park District, this letter shall serve as notice of the Park District's opposition to the BMW Auto Nation proposal to close Westmont Drive. As you know, Westmont Park District Fitness Club is located on the corner of Westmont and Plaza Drive and will adversely be impacted by the loss of direct access to Ogden Avenue. The Park District recognizes BMW's value as a Westmont business and their many contributions to our community. However, closure to Westmont Drive is not in Westmont's best interests or the interest of those businesses located on Plaza Drive who will lose direct access to Ogden Avenue and substantial on-street parking. It is the opinion of the Park Board that BMW project and the resulting economic benefit to the village can be accomplished without vacating Westmont Drive. From our review of the development plans, we note that only parking lots will be constructed east of Westmont Drive. No structures are proposed within the right-of-way or east of the street. Therefore, the project can be constructed and operated safely without eliminating, eliminating the primary mode of ingress, egress from the numerous businesses immediately north of the project on Plaza Drive. Retaining through traffic while adding mid-block crossing and other traffic calming measures such as the signal, lights, speed bumps will create a safe and appropriate pedestrian crosswalk between the lots east of Westmont Drive and the new structures to the west. The Park District would also support a no-left turn onto Ogden Avenue from Westmont Drive during the evening rush hours and any other means of traffic control. Eliminating access to Plaza Drive from Westmont Drive would have material adverse economic impact on the Park District's Fitness Club and other businesses behind BMW. While difficult, while difficult to quantify without engaging in an expensive and time-consuming study, it cannot be disputed that any business reliant on convenience and location to attract and retain customers will suffer... retain customers will suffer material consequences from the loss of its principal means of ingress egress. Lastly, closing, Westmont Drive will add substantially to the already extreme congestion on Blackhawk Drive, essentially placing a stranglehold on the intersection of Ogden Avenue and Blackhawk Drive and Plaza Drive and Blackhawk Drive. Blackhawk Drive and the streets around Tywone Park already strained to safely accommodate the heavily congested area and are constantly filled with a mix of traffic from businesses, schools, residents, park patrons, and transporters for the auto dealers. For reasons above, the Westmont Park District Board of Commissioners opposes the proposed closure of Westmont Drive. The Park District supports BMW's expansion. However, the expansion can and should be completed without the elimination, the principal means of ingress egress of the fitness club and the many other businesses located on Plaza Drive who depend on direct access to Ogden Avenue for their success. We appreciate your sincere and careful consideration of our request to preserve Westmont Drive. Please contact me if you wish to discuss any matter further. Signed, Diane Main, President, Westmont Park District Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
May I, just for your information, next time you talk to Diane?
Sure.
Tell her to spell my name correctly, will you?
Will do.
Will there be any further public comment?
Okay, let's poll the commissioners. Let's start talking about the re-
Mr. Chairman, if I could, could we talk about these last comments?
Oh, please, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Michael Werthman will be back up for that.
Just a couple of questions regarding the traffic. We did evaluate Blackhawk Drive, both at Plaza Drive and Ogden Avenue. We looked at it in the three peak periods, the AM, the PM, and a Saturday, and both intersections are projected to operate at very good levels of service. It is true that you do have to wait a little bit on Blackhawk Drive at Ogden Avenue. That's no different than any collector road along Ogden Avenue. Ogden Avenue is the state route. It's got 142nd cycle length with the majority of that going to Ogden Avenue. However, Blackhawk Drive still operates at a good level of service. It does queue up somewhat, particularly in the PM, but typically, most of the vehicles, all of the vehicles clear the intersection, and is projected to continue to clear the intersection with the reassignment and the other growth. We even indicate in the traffic study that we would like to go meet with I dot and talk to them to see if we can get a few more seconds to enhance that operation. Furthermore, the intersection of Blackhawk and Plaza Drive operates very well now, level of service A or B. You have to remember, Blackhawk Drive is more of a collector road. It's not an arterial roadway. It carries a lower volume of traffic. So does Plaza Drive. So it operates at a very good level of service and has the capacity to accommodate this additional traffic. As it pertains to the loading dock, Plaza Drive is a wider road. I think it's built to your industrial standards, much wider. We do a lot of work with industrial developments and backing into loading docks, and these drivers are really good now. They do back in, but it doesn't take five to seven minutes. It typically takes a couple minutes. They're usually in the truck, so if there is an emergency response, they can pull out, get out of the way for any emergency access. We're willing to work with you on the I dot issue, but even without the additional signal timing, it's still operating at a good level of service. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Will there be any other public comment? Seeing no hands raised, we'll close the public comment. I would ask our attorney to speak for a moment.
A question was asked whether Ellen has the right to request an extension. I have advised the commission they do. She also has the right to cross-examine witnesses at this public hearing. The BMW representative is not present. She has requested the right to question him, so it's up to the commission to determine whether they would wish to extend that courtesy, to extend this public hearing, to allow her that right. That is your choice to do that, so it's up to you to determine whether you want to allow that request for her to come back and question the representative from BMW.
Okay, upon hearing these words, let's poll the commissioners. We'll start with Doug Carr, Michael.
I think it's a legitimate request.
My understanding of that, it's her right to request it and our right to refuse it?
It's your right to, it's a reasonable request. It would be my counsel that if she has specific questions that she wants to address on BMW, not on the vacation portion of this process, because again, the commission is not giving any kind of recommendation on the vacation aspect. It's only giving a, you know, findings of fact on the variance aspects. So if she has specific questions that she wants to address to BMW on their operational impacts on the variance requirements, she has that right, and it would be my counsel that you give her that opportunity to ask those questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Pill. I guess I would ask, were your questions answered? I'm not sure, or do you have more questions? I sort of lost it in the, as it went back and forth there, because I feel that you should be given as much information as you need to represent your clients. I totally support that, but I'm not sure if, in the different people who came up, if your information was answered.
Not all of it was, and with due respect, they really don't have the authority to answer for BMW, even though he's the civil engineer and he's the project engineer. I don't know that he has the authority to answer for the property owner, for BMW.
I understand. I would then support Ms. Emery's request.
Commissioner Thomas.
If, I don't know or care if you have authority to speak or not, that's your job, and you've been hired to do that. The point is whether you have your information that you're requesting or not. If it's not, then I support her right to the continuance.
Commissioner Sharp.
I think I just want to clarify what is being put before us tonight, because as Kevin, as you mentioned, we are not, I don't think it was made clear before, but we are not needing to advise on this vacation of Westmont Drive, and yet it's, the plan of vacation for Westmont Drive is on the agenda. So what are we commenting on as a board?
You're providing, general, your comments on the vacation, but it's not, it's not like, it will not be a part of the findings of fact. You will just be giving your opinion on the vacation. The vacation will be handled solely by the village board.
Okay. Right, and how that affects the site plan in general as well, but the actual sale of the real estate will be handled by the village board and not the planning and zoning commission.
But yet, this is the public hearing for the vacation.
No, there is no public hearing. Process for this portion, it would be handled solely by the village board. As Jill said, this is, it's somewhat of a chicken and the egg. Your approval of the site plan shows that the road is being vacated.
Right.
So you have to give your opinion on whether you would support the vacation through the site plan that you would be approving.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes.
Thank you.
Essentially, then, I could gather, all we're giving is our recommendation that it's a good idea that they vacate it.
That, yes, if that's your ultimate decision, that would be, it's your advice.
Okay, my main concern that was brought up was emergency access, and the point was made quite clear. I mean, and it's shown on all of these site plans that there is a complete fire department access through your site, so I don't see how they would be any less safe on Plaza Drive than they are now. And of course, the fire department would have to weigh in on that. I assume they already have weighed in on that.
They have, I think, haven't they?
But I also agree that it's strange that the owner is not present, size of development, and I would support, if there are legitimate questions to be asked, which it sounds like there are, I would support the continuance.
I would agree. I would support a continuance if that's-
I didn't even get to call your name.
Oh, I'm saying, and I spoke out of turn, I apologize, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bartel, I'm just, it's late, and I'm looking for a little-
I was waiting for the gavel. I was, I got nervous there for a minute.
Time-out corner.
I would support a continuance if we need to.
Okay, thank you very much. All right?
Mr. Chair, can I make one?
Yes, sir, please.
I think, I heard your attorney said that you're voting on the special use to operate an automotive dealership in the B2 general desert, the zoning code variance for the front yard setback, and the zoning code variance for the height. And that's, is that what I heard? And then, so if council has comments or questions about those three things, other than that, isn't that what we're granting here?
Yes, and she has the right to cross-examine your witnesses on operational impacts of what those variances would do. It's up to Ellen. Again, I'm not here to present your case. I think you've presented some in your application, your support of your variances. She has the right to cross-examine the BMW representative on how those variances will impact operational and all the standards that have to be proven. She has that right. Whether, again, whether those will be questions that you deem appropriate, that's obviously something that will be discussed.
I guess, I guess my first comment is, or obviously my last one, if we knew what those questions were, shouldn't we have those so that we can be prepared to discuss those? I guess, to come to the next meeting, and then she asks us something that we don't physically have in our hand, is going to, now we're going to go for another continuation? It just seems like we, we're giving her our information, we need to see, we need to know what, in fact, are these perplexing questions that only Pat Womack can answer.
Part of my, part of my closing comments this evening would be to suggest that both parties have a meeting, a sit-down meeting, as soon as possible, to present each question to each other, so that when you do come back, if we do postpone you, that when you do come back, all questions will be answered.
But I think what she's requiring is that be a meeting with a principle.
And we had that meeting. I mean, as much as you want to say, Pat's not here, he was here for the last, he was in town for the last meeting that continued. This lady was not at the meeting that we had with all the neighbors, with all the business people that Pat ran, and we tried to shake out all the questions there. And now, you know, we're two months later, and we're still shaking out questions.
It's possible that she was engaged after that meeting by some of the people that are at the meeting. It's possible.
Right, and I understand that, but, you know, at some point, either we're going to approve this thing or we're not. And I guess that's, that's our point. We're going on three months, it's going to be three months before we get a recommendation to the village board.
Ellen, is it your formal request that you would be allowed to postpone until the next agenda?
Yes, it is.
I would entertain a motion to postpone until our next scheduled meeting, which would be?
Mr. Chair, beforehand, are there any other concerns from the commission or questions that should be on the record so that the-
One thing, Ellen's referring to the traffic studies. Ellen, are you a certified traffic engineer?
No, I'm not.
I would suggest, then, that you raise these questions, you have a certified traffic engineer, too.
I can ask questions and I can talk about observations, Mr. Chairman, without being a certified traffic engineer.
Yes, but there, again, when I have a certified engineer, I tend to consider it hearsay.
All right, I understand your concern, but it's-
That would be just a suggestion to you if-
Mr., your counsel can advise you as to what in public comment and what in cross-examination of an applicant, such as the BMW dealership, what's appropriate cross-examination and what isn't, and what questions we can have answered and what questions they may not be able to answer.
No, the only reason I suggested that would, you would have your own expert testimony to present in rebuttal.
I understand that, and I can, or I will get somebody from I dot.
Okay, very fine.
Just for one point, I think earlier when you asked for the motion, I think you asked for a motion to postpone. I think we want to enter and continue the public hearing that is being opened this evening.
Right, otherwise you'd have-
Enter and continue it to the next date that you choose.
Right.
That way you don't have to re-notice anything.
We were in the process of, what would be the next available date if we were to choose to postpone?
The meeting on August 3rd.
Oh, but we already have two backed up in there. We'll be here until 3 o'clock in the morning.
Should we find out if Pat's schedule is, do you know Pat's schedule time?
We can do the 10th, which is the regularly scheduled meeting.
I'm sorry?
The 10th is the regularly scheduled meeting.
10th, and they were going to not have a meeting because of nothing there.
I understand that.
We'll schedule it. But if there are other questions or comments from the commissioners, it would be helpful to include those tonight so that the applicant can have time to respond before the next meeting.
Okay, let's start with Commissioner Bartel. Pros and cons on what we have been presented before, up till now, I'm sorry, up until now.
Well, I'm not going to comment on the traffic issue, because that's a separate, but the project sounds wonderful, and it looks like it has been well researched, it's been well presented. From what I have seen, it's, the only question I had is relative to the landscaping. The village was going to pay for 10 trees to be removed at $17,000, is that not correct? It wasn't clear who was going to pay for the removal of the trees and who would plant new trees. That's the only thing I wasn't clear about. It's not a big deal, but I-
Well, I know through the village comments that I received from our first plan that had been submitted, there are 10 trees that are going to be removed, and those were noted on a tree inventory and protection plan, though I do not know who was going to pay for that removal. We do have parkway trees along Ogden put into the landscape plan. And as we're speaking with Tom tonight, there was discussion about putting some parkway trees along the cul-de-sac as well, but exactly who's paying for that, I'm not certain of at this point.
Okay, those are my only questions I wasn't sure of. Everything else sounded very good.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Sharp?
Yes. See. I am compelled, in the last 15 minutes, it's late, but I'm compelled that if we take the vacation of Westmont Drive off the table, the remaining variances in special use requests are outstandingly commonplace, and it causes me to wonder, what are the questions that the owner could answer that these experts could not answer? And I don't know if we have legitimacy in asking you what those questions are now, or if we don't. I'd let counsel advise that.
I guess I'll state that the variations that have been requested are based upon this site plan, which shows the vacation in it. So it has to be dovetailed into one, because if that street remains, that site plan's not approved.
Okay.
I think is ultimately how it would play out.
Okay, I have no further comments then.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing with the vacation. I have personal doubts on both sides of the testimony for the traffic, but then again, I'm not a traffic expert, and it'd be just my opinion against somebody else's opinion, somebody else's opinion. So I will wait and do my judgment in that when I hear everybody's testimony and put it all together.
Commissioner Pill.
I had a question, this is probably for Noriel. I'm going to put it in layman's terms, I'm not going to engineer up here on this, so typically when you see a cul-de-sac, it's sort of like, you know, it's straight, and then there's a ball at the end of it. So I noticed that you guys recommended that it be offset to the side like it is now, so it's sort of coming up almost like a backward number nine. Why is that? Why is it a terminate in the ball like that?
Currently, the property at the southwest corner-
Currently, the property at the southwest corner, in order to be able to get the ball perfectly centered, ideally would require acquiring right-of-way or property from that property at the southwest corner that is not-
Oh, integrated building, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Because they have no jurisdiction, and again, they don't, would require the-
I thought the ball, though, was past their driveway, no? The original plan?
The original plan was past their driveway, but under our requirement, we wanted the ball, the cul-de-sac portion, to be within 100% of village right-of-way, so we have control, there isn't going to be any gate on that. It allows us during our snowplow operations, full access into that bowl or cul-de-sac. We find that if there was a potential of, you know, parking, we have that control in that cul-de-sac to restrict parking and so forth. This way, that having the full control of the cul-de-sac is our, to our best benefit.
And is that cul-de-sac design big enough, then, for the semis that routinely deliver back there to execute a full U-turn? Okay. That was my other question, thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren.
I like the plan, and I would like to support the site plan with the vacation. However, I also am sensitive to the people who would be impacted and to what extent they're impacted, and I'm going to have to be convinced that it's not as bad as Ellen says, and probably it's not quite as good as you say, I don't know, but that's where I stand.
Commissioner Carmichael.
Well, that was well said, and I don't know that I could add anything. I do have a couple of questions that I'd like to see answered. One is, does anyone know, have you done a count of how many trucks are loaded and unloaded on Plaza Drive every day, or through any certain period? I would like to know where the car carriers are going to unload. I also use the term "level of service" with regard to a traffic signal or a four-way stop sign, but there's a definition, what is the specific meaning of level of service of an intersection? And you rated that four-way stop sign at Blackhawk and Plaza as a B, a level B, so there are a series of levels?
It's like a grading scale, it's A to F. Anything within the Chicagoland area, if you can get a level of service D or better, is considered acceptable. Level of service A or B is very good. So what it's saying is, it's operating very well, very efficiently, with limited delay. Now, that's the average level of service over those peak periods, but what it's indicating is that there's sufficient capacity, more than sufficient capacity, to accommodate the existing volume at that intersection.
So it's generally in relation to existing volume?
It's a volume-to-capacity type of-
Okay.
Analysis, and it really looks at the delay that's experienced at the intersection.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Basically, I also am in favor of this project. I think it's, you've done quite a bit of good work, but I also have the concerns. For the other person, the one gentleman, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but you alluded to that this, your project has been put off a month already, you're looking for action. But if I don't remember correctly, it was put off at your behest for a publication, so you can't lay that one at our doorstep, okay? I did have a couple of questions. One, what would be your parking deck? You've alluded a lot to the need for being able to park cars. Would your parking deck be built so that you could add levels in the future?
It certainly can be, it hadn't been planned that way yet.
Might be a consideration.
I've already noted it down, and we'll discuss it with all our nation.
And secondly, I believe a couple of years ago, you folks were in here with something, and I think you presented a plan for underground water detention. I would question whether or not your north water detention pond, if that were to be situated underground, you would have available probably 70 to 100 parking spaces that you could park on top of it. Might be something to consider. All right. I would entertain a motion to recommend, I'm told we have to open the public comment, because I closed the public comment.
If you did, yes, you just need to make sure it wasn't closed, so we're going to enter and continue the public comment for the next meeting.
The public comment is still-
The public comment is still open, or it has been reopened. I would entertain a motion to recommend, approve, to postpone-
Continue.
Enter and continue.
Enter and continue the public comment until our August 10th meeting. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel.
Yes.
Mr. Carmichael.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Pill.
Yes.
And Chairman Richard.
Philbin.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing you on the 10th, and please, have everybody with you again for their expert testimony. Thank you very much. Staff, any comments? Any Commissioner comments?
Commissioners, I just want to quickly remind you, there are three meetings coming up in August. We have one on the 3rd, the 10th, and the 17th. 3rd, the 10th, and the 17th.
Oh, yeah, he can't. He's a powerful man.
We are not adjourned yet.
Let me think about the downside of that.
We have one more order of business. I thought we checked it off.
We did not do the minutes. I thought it was because we didn't have them, I guess we did have them.
We did have them, okay.
We did not, we didn't have them.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure I didn't miss checking them off my list, so if you want to do that right now, we should probably do that right now.
Let's do it right now, we have an order of business to take care of, is the approval of our minutes of our June 8th, June 8th meeting. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Bartel. Question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bartel.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael.
Attempted to say no.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp.
I abstain.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill.
Yes.
And Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
And Chairman Richard.
Yes. Okay, no further business, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sharp, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.